This conference will now be recorded.
To all, welcome, and I'd like to call the Taos County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting Tuesday, September 2022. To order for the record, it is 9:03. Please call roll.
Commissioner Phambro.
Present.
Commissioner Daigos.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Vice Chair Brush.
Present.
Chair Vahill.
Present. Next, we have introductions of guests, and actually...
Madam Chair, the approval of the agenda is later. It's item seven. However, I ask that we allow the chair to, based on item 17B commissioners' announcements, that the chair be able to announce a press release at this time, and then all other commissioners' announcements will remain tabled until the item 17B comes up.
Commissioners?
That's in the form of a motion.
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Phambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Daigos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush.
Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes. Thank you. So I'd like to go ahead and start with reading the press release. This press release was, I believe, released yesterday on the county Facebook and has been turned over to the Taos News. And so at this time, this is how it reads, "Taos County Board of Commissioners weigh major revamp of livable environment ordinance." The Taos County Board of Commissioners would like to announce that following extensive constituent feedback, the proposed Taos County livable environment ordinance will be tabled until such time when there is opportunity to continue discussions with the community at large and invite feedback on community standards regarding potential nuisance properties that may represent a clear threat to public health and safety. The intent of the ordinance, as originally proposed, was to give the county authority to deal with nuisance properties, which by definition, in the Taos County Land Use Regulations, Ordinance 2018-2 Public Nuisance, consists of knowingly creating, performing, or maintaining anything without lawful authority affecting a number of citizens, which is, number one, injuries to public health, safety, or welfare, or, number two, interferes with the exercise and enjoyment of public rights, including the right to use public property. As it stands, the current draft of the proposed Taos County Livable Environment Ordinance has only been brought before the Taos County Board of Commissioners for discussion and was never presented in a public hearing in which the outcome would be to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. For this reason, Taos County has decided to not pursue the ordinance in its current format and will reassess, based on community feedback, what qualifies as a public nuisance as defined by the land use regulations and community standards, and what authority the county should have to best mitigate any threats to public health and safety that any nuisance properties may represent. As public servants, the Taos County Board of Commissioners, administrative staff, planning department staff, and solid waste department staff all want to work towards policies that better represent the traditional character of Taos County and its residents, and be responsive to issues which might represent threats to public health and safety." So that is it, and I hope, and I look forward rather to getting around the table and discussing with the public. And so we look for, we look forward to future conversations. Commissioners? We're good? Okay. So let's go ahead and move forward, and now we're at introduction of guests. And Mr. Harameo, will you be introducing Mr. James Kaiser, interim CEO of Holy Cross Hospital Medical Center?
Welcome.
Oh, okay. Now, this is a little bit out of order because it does have Pledge of Allegiance after, so I'm following the agenda. My apologies.
It is on the agenda.
Agenda. Thank you very much. Go forward.
Good morning. Commissioner, stand and introduce James Kaiser, interim CEO, Chief Assistant Officer for Holy Cross Medical Center. He's been here at the hospital for about six weeks, and he's worked with Mr. Patton before Patton is left. And so he's going to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about himself, and we'll go from there. James.
I appreciate this opportunity. I know I'm supposed to be brief, just an introduction, but I think we have a lot of opportunity to strengthen relationships with the county, and I want you to know I'll be fully available. We'll be more transparent. I'll try to have the foresight to communicate as best we can. But for the betterment of our larger community, I think we need to come together for the good of all. So I look forward to hearing from you and what we can do more of, better, or differently. So, thank you.
Mr. Kaiser, thank you very much for being here, and we also look forward to the opening of the lines of communication. And we certainly all live in this community that we love so much, and so we look forward to those conversations. Thank you for being here. Okay, next, we have inspirational devotion, and I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Commissioner Phambro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things that I would like to speak about. If everyone would please stand. And we had a tragic event that happened in our school yesterday with, I believe it was an eighth grader. And violence in schools has no place in society. And I ask now that we just have like a moment of well-wishing for the recovery of the young man, and we pray for his family and friends and the whole school community. We could just have a moment. Thank you. Madam Chair, this, and fellow commissioners, public, this past week, our firefighter community within Taos County lost two very longtime members. I'd like to honor them for their service that they gave, and I would like to read what Chief Cordova sent out. "Good evening. I want to pass along some really sad information. Hondosoco Fire Department Life Member Harold Sisnetos lost his battle to cancer and passed away last week. Mr. Sisnetos held various ranks in the department, who include safety officer and captain. He served full-time with the department for 16 years and was placed on as life member list soon after he was diagnosed with cancer. He will be missed. Mr. Sisnetos, your time and service to the county has ended." Another email from Chief Cordova. "It is with a heavy heart that I send out this email. Pinasco Fire Department Assistant Chief Johnny Abeta, Pinasco Fire Two, passed away this morning around 4:00 a.m. Chief Abeta served in the Pinasco Volunteer Fire Department for right around 50 years. He served as assistant chief since 2004 and was a hotshot firefighter for 25 years. Chief Abeta will be remembered for a lot of things. The one thing that stands out is his little red Toyota pickup waiting on the side of the road to lead EMS into the scene. Chief will be greatly missed." Anytime we lose a firefighter, whether it be in the line of duty or this way, it just shows us what the volunteer sense of the word, and what the time that those gentlemen gave for our community. And Madam Chair, if I can, there's a firefighter's prayer, and there's a patron saint to firefighters at St. Florian, for those of you that didn't know. But I'll read the firefighter prayer at this time, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
"Whenever I am called to duty, God, wherever flames may rage, give me the strength to save some life, whatever be its age, or to save an older person from the horror of that fate. Enable me to be alert and hear the weakest shout, and quickly and efficiently put the fire out." That's to honor those two gentlemen, and also honor all the volunteers throughout the county that serve their community each and every day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, anyone want to add anything? No. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Well, we should remain standing, as next is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Kaiser, would you do us the honor and start the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Well, let's continue. Now, we have the salute to the flag. And Commissioner Brush, please. She says it so beautifully.
(Inaudible) the flag of the state of Mexico, the universal, for the friendship of all Americans.
Thank you. Okay. So next is approval of agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve?
And let the record reflect the change that we did make to the one item, and the remainder of that item will be taken in order.
Great. Okay. So there's a motion. Is that a second?
Second.
Okay. Please call for the vote.
Commissioner Daigos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Phambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush. Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes. Okay, next, we have awards and recognitions. And before us is a proclamation in support of National Recovery Month. Mr. Harameo?
A proclamation in support of National Recovery Month. By the way, it's Behavioral Health Providers' Professionals Day as well today, September 20th. But a proclamation in support of National Recovery Month, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness, and whereas Taos County ranks in the bottom 10 in many categories regarding substance use disorder, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and recovery is possible, and whereas preventing and overcoming the mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas the people at Taos Pueblo, Taos County, and the town of Taos are all affected by the epidemic of substance use disorder, and whereas we must encourage relatives, friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorder to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to the appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain recovery, the citizens of Taos County, Taos Pueblo, and the town of Taos, and now therefore the governor of Taos Pueblo, the mayor of the town of Taos, and the chairperson of the Taos County Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September 22nd of 2022 as National Recovery Month. In Taos County, New Mexico, call upon the people of the town of Taos, Taos County, Taos Pueblo, New Mexico, to observe this month with the appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies in support of the recovery theme. Recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. And witness whereof, I have here upon semi-hand and official seal on this 24th day of September in the year of 2022. This will be signed by Taos Pueblo Governor Clyde Romero, Taos Mayor Pasqualito Maestas, and Commission Chair Darlene Vahill. And there will be a ceremony on the 24th of September, and Rio Grande Alcohol Treatment Program is taking the lead in helping put that together.
Right, and thank you very much for that. It will be at the Kit Carson Park, beginning at noon to 4:00 p.m. And thank you, Mr. Harameo. I did want to point out that I believe this is the first proclamation that we are joining with the Pueblo and the town. So I think it's a very good cause, but certainly important to recognize that, once again, there's collaboration. And as we all know, collaboration is very important as we need to, as we move forward, we need to always remember that we can do much better together than alone. So, Commissioners, any comments?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If they could, if you could notice a quorum, Mr. Harameo, because I'm sure some of us will be in attendance, and I guess Santiago Baca is the keynote speaker at one at the park. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving forward, we are on nine. Citizens' concerns, I'm sorry, citizens wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes, and no action may be taken. Do we have anyone present that would like to come forward to the podium, and please state your name and location of where you live for the record?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Karen Gonzalez. I'm from Amalia, New Mexico, and I am representing the Amalia Neighborhood Association. We are a group of about six people that take care of the community center up there and other issues of concern in the community. I did have a few questions, but I spoke to Mr. Harameo earlier, and he told me that my concerns about the Ancianos building would be presented in, at their next meeting, so I'll be back to listen to that. In addition to that, though, I would like to know what is going on at the community center. There's lots of rumors going on about the Ancianos building, and all of a sudden, there's a big pile of rebar out by one door. There's, something is broken into the ground at one area, and I don't know if they're starting to work on it or what they're doing. And my other reason for concern is, we're starting to get going again after COVID. We've got a 103-year-old gentleman who's having a birthday party there this weekend. I need to know when things are happening on your end so that I could prepare to, whether or not we should even be allowing that. And then the weekend after that, we're actually having another event, so that's pretty exciting for us because we don't have a lot going on in Amalia. The other thing concerning the Ancianos building is, many years ago, a member of our community donated a pool table to the Ancianos, and it is in the building that's currently in question. I have asked several times if we could move that pool table into the community center where it can be used. I keep getting told they're going to get back with me, but they haven't. And so I, we just would like to have that for the community to use it. The other two things that I have on my list here are, actually, there's just one more. The weeds. I called Josh Swazo a few weeks ago and asked him to help me with the weeds. We do what we can. My dad goes with his tractor and bush hog and cleans the weeds that he can get to with that. We all know the rain has been horrendous this year, and the weeds now by the doors to the building are above the top of the door. I need help. And I asked Josh to give me some help. He said he would, but I haven't heard back from him. So I would like to see if we could get something done before this party this weekend. It would be really nice, because I think there will be a lot of people running around the grounds. And with weeds, there's snakes, there's bugs, there's lots of things that I'd really rather we didn't have to deal with later. So, thank you for your time.
And thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The timer here is not working, so I'll be keeping it online.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Sir?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Pritchard. I'm with Renewable Taos here in Taos. I'm on the executive board, and I'm reporting today that preparations are well underway for the, this year's Electric Vehicle Expo to be held this coming Saturday at the Taos Public Library. It's open to the public at noon, noon to 4 o'clock. We have a speaker program inside the library from 1:00 to 3:00 with six distinguished speakers on various, experts on various things related to renewable energy, renewables at the cooperative, conversions from internal combustion engine cars to electric vehicles as a hobby kind of thing, and also transmission power lines in the area. This year, well, last year, we had about 250 people and about 25 vehicles, including electric bicycles, electric motorcycles. This year, we're expecting about 10 or 12 different types of EVs, and also two electric pickup trucks, a Rivian and a Ford F-150 Lightning pickup truck. So Renewable Taos would like to thank the county for all their support and interest in the past, and invite you to attend. And I stand now for any questions you may have on this event. So.
Thank you. And I guess it's appropriate to ask that you, the staff, note that there's a possible quorum, potential quorum, as I think we're going to be kind of going back and forth on that date. So, thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Peter Seltzer. I live in District One. My wife and I live west of the golf course of Los Cortez, in an area where there are very few homes. What I would like to do is to bring to your attention my concern regarding the Night Sky Protection Ordinance, and particularly how it relates to security lights. The ordinance was written in 2006, which is prior to the availability, sorry, availability of these new extremely intense LED security lights that one can now purchase. They're typically about 5,000 lumens, which is more than twice the allowed amount for regulated lights, and security lights are completely exempt. Approximately a year ago, a neighbor of mine, a new neighbor, installed one of these lights on his home. The light is completely non-directional, and while we live more than a quarter mile away, when the light is on, it obnoxiously illuminates our property. Furthermore, the light is on every time a strong south wind blows, every time large animals come by, and we see our share of bighorn sheep that wander through, and every time the neighbor goes in and out of his property. We neighbors have spoken to him, and the county has come out and actually talked with him. His position is that it's my light, it's legal, I'm not doing anything about it, and if you don't like it, get darker shades. So I come to the county in hopes that something can be done about it. The simplest thing to do would be to eliminate the exemption for security lights. In doing so, the lights would then need to be hooded, like every other light, and they would be restricted to 2,200 lumens, which is plenty bright, and that's the limitation of all other lights. If the county does not go that far, at least, I'm hoping that the ordinance would be amended to require that security lights, like every other light, be hooded. This would prevent, in the words of the ordinance, "light trespass." In other words, regardless of how intense the light is, keep the illumination only to the owner's property, and don't illuminate the neighbor's property. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Steve Meyer. I've been a landowner and a homeowner here in Taos County for 18 years, my own property behind via Escondido. I'm also associated with Renewable Taos, and I'd like to begin my remarks by thanking the commissioners and Kit Carson for making Taos County and the Kit Carson service area close to 100% daytime solar. But there is another side to energy use in Taos County and the Kit Carson service area, and that is efficiency. And so I'm encouraging the commissioners to consider ways to save energy, especially the wasted energy that you find in buildings, residences, and business properties. We can do that simply by replacing a lot of incandescent bulbs, adding weatherization to homes, especially those that are low income or in a marginalized community, because they do spend a significant amount of their income on their energy costs, and I think we can help them. Finally, we do have another event in addition to the Electric Vehicle Expo on the 24th of September, and that is on October 28th at UNM Taos Baton Hall, an Electrify Our Buildings and Heat Pump Seminar. This is entirely free. The morning is organized for installers, HVAC, and electrical contractors to come and learn how to put in heat pumps, induction stoves, other electric devices in homes and businesses, such that we eliminate our emissions from fossil fuels. In the afternoon, it's aimed at homeowners and business owners to learn about ways they could save energy in their premises also. October 28, UNM Taos Baton Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to come forward? Yes, please.
Good morning. My name's Neil Thilke. I live on the Last Trumpus Road in Yanús San Juan, and I'd like to do a little historical assessment of how the county has gone backwards since the good old days when we had three commissioners. The school board would give the county a list of their school bus routes, and that's what the county adopted as their official county roads. So the school bus routes had the first priority on getting swept in the winter, and then they would come around to us secondary roads. We were included, but we were second priority. About three years ago, we had a snowstorm, and I was shoveling from our house to the first culvert, you know, maybe half a football field, and I had a medical incident. And I called emergency management, because emergency kind of means something, kind of meant something to me. Dominic told me, Dominic was interested in what road I lived on, and he told me that emergency was conditional to living on a designated county road. So my health hasn't improved since then, and I think when Cordova came on, he instituted the anti-donation clause, which was not what the legislature intended to be used as a weapon against people. I don't have anything more right now. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Anyone else before we ask those that... Before we ask those online, if they'd like to speak, is there anyone else present that would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Brenda O'Connor, and I've been a Taos County resident for a few years now. I want to speak specifically to the livable, the livable, the environment ordinance, and I want to just put on record that I feel that it is too easy with this ordinance for it to be used to discriminate against your neighbors as opposed to actually it to be used to discriminate against your neighbors as opposed to actually make your life that much better. You know, there are so many situations where neighbors interfere with neighbors. For instance, this gentleman that has the obnoxious light interfering with his enjoyment of his property. There are ways for us all to enjoy our properties and to live peaceably without discriminating against each other, and I just want to be on record as saying that this ordinance is a discrimination ordinance, not a livable ordinance, especially because there's punishments seem to be written into this, but we don't have like help for those residents that don't have running water or nice kitchens or any of these things. We just have punishments, and this is a bad piece of legislation. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else present who would like to speak? Seeing none, let's move on to those that are on Zoom or on virtually, excuse me. If you want to speak, please unmute yourself, and we'll go ahead and call on you. Vice Chair, do you see anyone? I can never catch them all. No? Okay. Okay, seeing none, let's move forward. Now we're going on to the minutes, approval of the September 6, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Madam Chair, move to approve the September 6, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanbro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Behill?
Yes. Approval of September 12, 2022 special meeting minutes. Commissioners? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Commissioner Fanbro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Behill?
Yes. Next, discussion about Camino del Abajo, and I believe Mr. Ray Gallegos will be coming forward to speak about that.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Ray Gallegos, and I have a couple of things to discuss about Camino del Abajo Road, county road, C-031 in Yanu Largo community in the Penasco area. The county managers, I mean, the county, county maintained this road very well in the summer and winter. I'm very happy with it. I was born and raised in a home along the road. I live there now. My home was my grandfather's and then my mother's, so we have used this road for over 80 years. There are 16 families along the road now, with some living there for many years, and my family, and some people who built a home recently at this, alongside this road, and also people that bought a house for $450,000 alongside that road. All of us are wondering and hearing the Santa Barbara Land Grant Group is claiming the road was given to them. Mr. Bonifacio Vazquez of the group that made that claim is the one that told us. And so, so far, use of the road, road maintenance easement and our property rights now seem uncertain to us. We are, we are not provided with a copy of a deed or any other legal documents, and where is the deed? I am asking for clarification of the Land Grant Group status and the status of homeowners like me. We only have one way in and out of our neighborhood at Camino del Abajo. Also, I'm handicapped and can't walk very, very far. Since the commissioners served four to eight years, it is important that we taxpayers, homeowners have a guarantee that Camino del Abajo remains under county control. Joe Fernandez called me and said that that road cannot be, belong to nobody, owned by nobody, because it's a county road and it's under an umbrella to be cleaned and scraped and the snow swept, just like every other county road. And now we have propane trucks, UPS, Kit Carson trucks, Kit Carson employees, electric easement, and we are wondering what's going to happen. So we wanted to stay county road, and I have some papers here about my, my health, about if I could give it to them, and that's for the road. Because if, if that road shuts down or something, it's going to be really bad for me to walk from wherever to my house. When can I get an answer, any kind of answer about this?
Commissioners, any, any questions or comments? And, and let's see, here from the road department, maybe Mr. Silva, can you answer a few questions just so the commission understands, is it a county maintained road? Is that correct? It's on our list.
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to present. Good morning. This, this road is a county maintained road, and right now I do have a meeting set up with Mr. Bonifacio Vazquez on Thursday at 2:00. We have some other issues that are going on with some of the, the timber that's been taken off of the roadway that we're going to be dispersing to the community as well. That's part of the land grant that was given to them, but we are going to be discussing this issue in full, in depth to understand. But I've expressed to Mr. Gallegos, and I did talk to him a couple of weeks ago prior to this, the road as maintenance agreement of all roadways, the road is still owned by the people. It's just we've entered a road maintenance agreement that we clean the snow and grade the road, place signs, and the transition of however the road goes between each easement. So, so the road will not change, but this is new to me, and to understand what's happening with the land grant of the, their claim of the land acquisition, if it, if it is part of the land grant and it goes back to state statute that it was taken from them at some point, that's beyond, that's something to fight with the state at this point. It's not something that we'll be dealing with, because essentially it's not a Taos County road. Every other county road that resides within our county is still owned by the people, it's just we've entered a road maintenance agreement. So we were going to, we'll still maintain the road because it's part of our inventory that gets recorded on a yearly basis. That's some of our funding that comes down the pipeline. So, so we will not restrict that. We will continue this, but like I say, I will provide additional feedback once I have this meeting on Thursday, and then I can provide to the commissioners and Mr. Gallegos, and you're welcome to attend to the meeting with Bonifacio as well.
Thursday?
It's going to be here in the, at executive conference room. So, so, so at this point, that's where we're currently at, but I, this is kind of new to me that this is being kind of picked up, but at the end of the day, if, if the property has been identified as the land grant from years back, and it's, we'll have to identify it. There's, there's some work that needs to be done.
There's about 16 families that live there right now. And also Mr. Bonifacio, I didn't like, because I talked to Candace, and Candace talked to me way before, and.
If we can have this.
But Bonifacio came to, to us and said, "This is my road, and I'm coming after the properties too."
Yeah, I will find out about that, and I will identify that, and then we'll bring this in, and we'll put this to rest.
Mr. Silva, thank you for your willingness to, to talk to these individuals, and I believe we've got Mr. Bonifacio Vazquez that would like to say something. Is that correct, Mr. Vazquez? Yes, I see your head. Please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Anybody hear me? Yeah. Well, good morning, everyone, Commissioner, the board, and Mr. Gallegos, good morning. First of all, I am Bonifacio Vazquez. I am now the president of the Santa Barbara Land Grant, and I definitely want to go ahead and state for the record right now that I have never told anyone, and I have never spoke to Mr. Gallegos and stated that that was my road and that I was coming after properties too. I have never made that statement, but I'd like to go ahead and focus on his concerns about the road. That road is a public road, and it, and it will, and we should continue to fight to maintain that road as a public road. That road is within the Santa Barbara Land Grant, a grant that was granted back in January of 1796. Our ancestors built that road to serve the communities of Yanu Largo and Yanu San Juan. That road was used by our ancestors to go to the mass or go to church right there in the San Ocasio Church, and it should remain open, and it should remain public, and it should be well-maintained. We are under no objectives to keep anybody or anybody away out of that road. What happened on that road is that going through the records of the land grant, we found that road to be an unclaimed piece of property within the land grant that county was maintaining that road. The thing is, is that the original road, the way the original road runs is different than what it is today. Probably one-fourth of that road now is a new addition to the road. The, the old road runs a different direction, and it's an unclaimed lands which it belongs to the land grant heirs. It's part of the land grant, and that's why a, we, we, we chose to investigate the status of that land. The county had abandoned that road, the original road, because that road actually connects Yanu San Juan and Yanu Largo, and the county has not maintained it for many years. In fact, a private individual took it upon himself to remove the bridge that was on that road, and this is one of the things that we as a land grant are trying to get back for the, for the heirs of the land grant, is their property. It belongs to them, and if the county has no longer use for it, we need that property back to be deeded back to the land grant. And I'm willing to sit down with Mr. Gallegos and set the thing clear. There is no intent, Mr. Gallegos, on part of any of me, on my part or anybody of the board, to deny access to anyone. In fact, what we want to do is improve the environment, improve the road, and continue to work with the community to make it a better place to live. That road has to serve the communities. We have to maintain it. We, as a land grant, as a subdivision or a subunit of the state, have the means to be able to talk to the county to help us maintain it. We have looked at the possibility of opening that road by getting a bridge. We have no intent to keeping anybody else, anybody out of that road or anybody giving, or not giving them access to that road. That is not true. Okay? Please understand that, Mr. Gallegos. That is not true. We are trying to help the community. That is land that belongs to our Santa Barbara heirs, and it, like I said, if the county is not going to maintain it, well, we as a land grant have a responsibility and are under the law to try to keep it in the best shape possible and into the best standards possible. One of the things that has to happen, Mr. Gallegos, is that adverse possession of common lands of the land grant should have never happened, and adverse possession of common lands of the land grant should stop. It should not be continued. Thank you. Subject to your questions, I am willing to answer them.
Okay, so I, it looks like there's a meeting in the near future, and so, Mr. Gallegos, thank you for presenting, and at this time, I'd say, let's, again.
Yes. Yes, I do have some clarification. When Mr. Bonifacio Vazquez speaks of the abandoned road, that road starts off of Upper Yanu. It was abandoned. It goes down a very steep hillside over to where that bridge was demolished probably by the landowner of the $450,000 house. Now, let me just finish so you understand. That road, we abandoned that road, okay? And then on top of the complication, there was a property owner who built without a permit, and I have, planning is aware, I hope the county assessor added it to the tax rolls. It is a cabin on the hillside where that road goes down, illegally built, dangerous, I mean, literally on the hillside, and, and that, yeah, that was near Mr. Albert Vidavre's property. He pointed it out to me years ago. We did, planning did go out. They did see it was illegally built without a permit, and, you know, I don't think the planning department can ask them to move the cabin, but I'm telling you, the issue on that road is they can't do much improvement because that cabin is right on the hillside. It's ridiculous. So I do hope it's on the tax rolls now and that these people are paying property taxes. I just wish we had a mechanism to force them to move that cabin back to the required setback, because it's dangerous. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Silva?
Like I mentioned before, I will have this meeting with Mr. Bonifacio, and Mr. Gallegos will be, if he wants to be present, will make this happen, and I will make sure that we come to some sort of resolve for everybody. One thing that I do want to state, though, is if this road, I'll identify a little bit more, but if this has been taken off of our inventory, currently what's being maintained and recorded to the state is the gradable, or at least the, the maintained area is identified within our, our county district maps. So if there was additional road with bridges that were, were at least neglected or at least maybe removed from, from that, the process of that would have to go back to petition and request for that road to be maintained by the property owners that are adjacent to this. So, so just want to make that note of it, that we're, any maintained road that we're receiving funds for are, is currently being maintained for that length of roadway. Anything that was, was given back at one point, if it needs to be taken back onto our, we'll have to go through the process that will be going, a petition will have to be completed, and it would go before the open meeting and be ratified by the commission to adopt additional mileage of this roadway. Just want to point that out.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's move forward. Okay. Okay, so next, we're on resolutions and ordinances, and Item A is discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2022-60, a resolution accepting the transfer, donation of real property from the town of Taos for use as a detox center for residents of Taos County. Mr. Atio?
For this donation of, of property, we had been working with the State Department of Finance in regard to determining what was necessary approval through, through them for this transfer. As you know, this is a, not a, a paid transaction. It is a donation from the town of Taos to the county, and the State Department of Finance requires this resolution to be done to reflect and, and state the acceptance of that donation. So that's what the resolution is being done for today.
Great, thank you very much. And with us today is our mayor. Mayor, would you please come forward? And I, I do want to say that to, to all, that this is a long time coming, and it's quite the process. I will tell you that it is moving, though, we do know this, but Mayor, I for one want to thank you, can't thank the town enough, that we're coming together to make this happen. So thank you for being here, and thank you for allowing this, you and the council. So please, if you have a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We have been working on this for a couple months since the, the town council approved this transition and donation of this building to Taos County. Fortunately, last week, we all just happened to be in the same place, met with Donnie Quintana with the FAA, and made sure that we got this on his plate. So would appreciate your, your consideration on this resolution so we can continue to get moving. It is recovery month, and it'd be a great time to push this initiative forward one more step, and looking forward to all of you and the council someday soon, cutting the ribbon together on a new detox facility.
Great, that's fantastic. Thank you. Commissioners, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Fanbro?
Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Atio, is there reversion clause in this agreement?
Mr. Atio, is there reversion clause in this agreement?
At the present time, what we're voting on today is simply the resolution. So I do not believe there is a reversionary clause.
Because if there is, as I stated early on,
Yeah.
we've been screwed over due to reversionary clauses in this transfer twice before. I will not support this if there's anything close to a reversion clause in this.
So what's going to happen today? I appreciate that and understand. So what's going to happen after today is there'll be a vote on the acceptance of the property itself. So it's important that you state that today because the chair will have the ability to sign the rest of the documents. So, and I do understand the concern.
Great, okay. Anything else, Commissioners? Mayor, did you want to add anything?
Madam Chair, thank you. Just to clarify, the council did approve the donation of the property with a reversionary clause, that if the property remains vacant, or if there's no longer a detox program within the building for a period of two years, it would revert back to the town. This is to satisfy the council's desire and my desire that we have a detox program. A vacant building does no good to our community, and I have full faith that you all and your staff will ensure that a detox program will be in there and we won't have to exercise that clause.
Great, thank you for pointing that out. And as I've stated in the past, I'm not real excited about reversionary clauses, but I do, you know, looking at the big picture and understanding the need for a detox, because it is our true intent to have a detox. I do want to state that I have no issues with it, but I also have noted that in other, for example, which we're not talking about right now, but other properties that we do have those reversionary clauses to assure the public that the intent is, we're going to see that through. So, yes.
And Madam Chair, if I could,
Oh, sorry.
if I could add that we did look at 50% joint ownership. We did look at a few different options. This one seemed to be the easiest, and there was only some concern that if we transferred the property without a reversionary clause, a future commission may use the building for something other than a detox center. So this was, I think, the easiest way to satisfy both the commission and the council and the public's need and desire for a detox center in hopefully perpetuity.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I would just like to thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, like to thank you for your partnership in this because I know your administration has been working on it for a few months. This current commission has been working on this with respect to this building for over a year, and the previous configurations of the commissions have been working on this for a long time. So it's extremely exciting that we are taking a big step forward. And in honor of National Recovery Month, I would like to move that we approve Resolution Number 2022-60 to accept the transfer slash donation of this property from the town of Taos for use as a detox center for our community.
And I will second that, Madam Chair.
With discussion, Madam Chair.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Hadamio, do you foresee anything that would hinder the exercise of this being reverted back to the town of Taos? Do you feel that there's the strong candidacy, or the program is strong enough to be able to have that existence longer than any two-year non-use of that building, only for the fact that, you know, we enter into some agreements in the past, over the past eight years, that I've seen us try to work with programs, and either they don't have funding, they go wayside, they go away. Where do you foresee this continuing to have that ability to keep the program up and running? Are we going to be, will the county continue to carry that burden and develop that if they can't partner with a program that would be able to do that detox?
Chair of the Hill, Commissioner Gallegos, my response to your question is, the county is looking to help fund a potential leasing for funding from the healthcare assistance program, so that would be indigent money. Those folks would have to be indigent qualified, but a potential respondent to the RFP can have some funding from there. Mr. Cordova, who's in the room, has also reviewed the RFP and provided feedback back to Mr. Trujillo, and that RFP is essentially done. That'd be one mechanism of potentially funding a respondent to the RFP. Mr. Trujillo is also, at this time, working on the lease for the building as well. So when we do acquire the building, that template lease would be ready to go. The lease and funding are two separate issues, so. And we went the lease route because they will look at consideration for what kind of services they're providing the community. And then, as you may recall, we have 195 hours, we have appropriation for 150 for housing, and there's 195 for detox. So this being an eight-bed facility, we know it's not big enough. So we did acquire some capital, money, so we can immediately, well, I shouldn't say immediately, we do have to issue out a request for proposal for a design firm to design in addition to the building. And at the same time, we are on the short list for congressionally directed spending from Senator Heinrich's office. And we haven't received final word, so the 195 would be used to design for that congressionally directed funding opportunity, and that way we could build an expansion to the building. But we would lease the building, and the tenants would have to work around, or the contractor would have to work around the tenant. So they would have to coexist until the addition is done, but that's the path we're going forward on.
We feel, I'm sorry, we feel that two years is sufficient. We can pull this off.
We should be able to pull it off in two years. If we begin the design this winter, and if we receive the congressionally directed spending, it would be not until probably late summer. So we wouldn't be doing any construction until late summer or next year. But there would be a tenant, and then there should be a tenant within the next six months
Right.
of the building. The other thing that we're waiting on is a, we need to get an appraisal done. And so that's one of the other things that we're trying to obtain as well.
And so the appraisal is not for the donation, it's for the lease?
It's for the lease.
Yes, okay. So that means we can
Also required by DFA, but who is this?
And what was I going to say? I'm sorry. And you're right, Mayor, everything just aligned when we were at the housing summit, and the people, the right people were at the table. We were able to have a quick meeting, making sure that this moves forward. And so that was really exciting to see. But, oh, yes, Commissioner Fambro.
For the record, Mr. Hadamio, how much money did we put into that building for the last time the town took it back away from us? I believe it's somewhere between $70,000 and $90,000 for the roof repairs.
I don't recall that. I didn't think that that was roof repairs. I know we worked on the interior.
Interior, and there were some roof issues, and then shortly after we did that, then they enacted their reversion clause that time. So just so you know where I'm going with this.
Madam Chair, if I may, I followed that closely. It was $10,000 or $20,000 improvements inside the building, and then Hock, not Hock Mechanical, the plumbers donated the new heating HVAC system. That was a donation from, help me with the name?
It was a Phoenix.
Phoenix Mechanical donated a new HVAC, and that was about $10,000, $10,000 to $15,000 max that was done with painting and fire repair. And then the town came in and did some of their own work for COVID.
I remember the budget amount was up to, I want to say between $70,000 and $90,000. That's what we were told at first, and then it turned out not to be that. But that's the work that we put into it, the money we put into it for the town to go back the second time.
Any further discussion?
Just quickly, Madam Chair, I think if maybe Mr. Atio could answer. When we receive the opioid lawsuit settlement, we are able to use that opioid money for additional substance abuse repairs to the building. Is that correct?
So what the opioid settlement will fund would be anything related to the treatment or our expenses for that treatment. So I think we would be covered for that. I have not specifically looked at capital, whether there's a difference between capital and annual expenditures. So, but yes, that is what that money is for.
And what's the amount?
I believe, Brent, it's about $330,000.
What?
$330 and some thousand.
That's all? I thought it was going to be like three or four million.
No, not from this settlement. There are still pending cases. So these were settlements with specific providers of opioids. So there is a potential for more money coming in the future, but right now, that is the total amount.
Thank you. And then I would have you consider, so you just do a standalone building, additional for rooms, instead of tying up, adding to, you know, having whoever the provider is try and run a program with construction in the building or on the side of the building. So I would please ask you to consider if we can build a standalone building for rooms for the extra people, and then maybe that would satisfy having a women's quarters separated from the men. But I think if we're going to build a building, a new building add-on to the existing, it's going to be a problem. It's going to delay them getting in the building, and they have to work around it. Who wants to do that? So please have whoever gets contracted look at a standalone building. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one last question. When does the clock start ticking? Is it when the deed is signed, Mr. Atio, or Mayor? Do you know?
Madam Chair, when the deal is completed, so yes, when, that would be the final step, is the signing of the deed. And I would think I would offer to the town an ability to discuss with them, for example, if there's something that happens with the timing that is approaching two years. I do think, because we're partners with the town, we could go to the town and discuss, for example, I mean, after coming out of COVID and some of the other natural disasters we've had to deal with the last few years, there are things that happen that interfere with reality. So, and I will speak to the town attorney, and probably Mr. Trujillo will for us because he's been handling this, but I think that the discussion should be about an inclusion of language like that, if it's amenable to the mayor and the town council.
Thank you. That's a great, great idea. Mayor, I hope that would be acceptable.
And Madam Chair, that would be acceptable. I'll leave it up to the lawyers to figure out the language. But certainly, the primary goal of my administration and the council is to have a functioning detox center, and we're not looking to get the building back. So as long as there's a program in there, as Mr. Atio mentioned, I agree, I think the clock starts ticking when the deal is done, and the clock would start ticking again at some time in the future when the program ends. But in our point of view, the clock starting to go down means pressure to put a program back in place and in service to the community. And of course, at least under my administration, knowing that there's a lot up in the air right now with the CDS funding and getting a new program, we will certainly be as flexible as possible regarding the reversionary clause, as long as we can see some progress that a detox program is coming.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, unless there's any further discussion. I'd like to go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward to 12B, which is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of resolution number 2022-61, a resolution supporting the 30-by-30 campaign to protect 30% of U.S. lands and waters by 2030. And Mr. Garrett Vanacloson, Northern Conservation Director, is with us today. Welcome. Good to see you, Garrett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Garrett Vanacloson of New Mexico Wild. I'm here with Stephen Fry from Amigos Bravos, and Greg Peters from Conservation Voters of New Mexico. And thank you all again for entertaining this resolution, as well as the great dialogue that happened in the last commission meeting. Based on the dialogue of the commission meeting, there were some additions to the original resolution, and I expect or suspect that you all have read those. I'd be happy to read them to you if you'd like. If you don't want me to do that, I will sit down and shut my mouth.
Madam Chair,
Yeah.
Mr. Vanacloson, maybe just a quick highlight of the kinds of additions that were made after our last conversation about this would be helpful.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, one of the requests was to have a clause in there that talked about initiating a community and stakeholder-driven process to talk about development and the percentages of those developments that would remain in some sort of green belt or undeveloped state. And again, obviously, that's a long process that is, that would obviously involve a lot of robust conversation within communities. I'd be happy to read that if you'd like. And then there was a clause about our generational obligation to future generations about the importance of doing this. And if we don't act now, that the consequences of climate change and, you know, the wildfires and aridity that we're facing, if we don't address them proactively through restoration and conservation, that our children will suffer horribly. And I really love the idea of that, and I think that that is definitely in the spirit of Taos. And so those are really the main additions. It also talks about acknowledging the executive order from the governor, Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham, and the Biden administration, which are in the spirit of, you know, the 30-by-30 idea. And so, you know, and I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done after this resolution happens in terms of planning, right? Restoration and conservation and analysis of watersheds and landscapes, and would welcome not only the input of this body, but the constituency of Taos. And I really do think that we need to plan, and we need to make sure that we're as well-positioned for resiliency as we can be. And so it's great to work with you all who recognize that and get it, and really want to be proactive about this. So really appreciate your openness and your dialogue and ideas, and want to, hopefully this gets passed, and then we can move forward with planning ideas.
Yes, as we say, the real work starts after.
Madam Chair, motion to approve resolution 2022-61, a resolution of the Board of Taos County Commissioners, supporting the 30-by-30 campaign to protect 30% of U.S. lands and waters by the year 2030.
Madam Chair, a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
Just a quick discussion.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out, we found the yellow book of Rio Reba County, they only allow allow, depending on the zoning district, 30% to be developed, which means they are letting, they are required, developers are required to only develop 30%. So 70% of land is, is held. It was, it's much stricter than the 30 by 30.
Don't change it to 70 by 70 because in that case it's a 2070 before it even gets started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to point out that it's a, a great resolution. I, I read it and I really liked the wording. So Garrett, great job. Thank you. So that's all.
He has the gift of gab. These guys, really, I'm just the.
Madam Chair, I'd like to see this resolution at the Outdoor Economics Conference, copies of it in our booth. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, well, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, so moving on, 13A, which is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Contract TCC-2022-45 Facility Build Incorporated, TALPA Community Center Roof. And Mr. Sanchez, our construction projects manager, will, will be talking to us here.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, what we have is we're asking the go-ahead to re-roof the TALPA Community Center. It's not an entire re-roof. It's the main part of the building where the library is, the offices, the sewing room. It's not the part where the kitchen and the meeting room is. That will eventually have to get re-roofed, I'm going to say probably within the next five years. But the main roof is leak, has current leaks, has some soft spots. They've patched over the years, different parts of it, parts of it are a little bit newer than others. This would be a new roof, the same type of roof that we have here on the complex. It's a TPO. And also the slope, to keep structural weight down, we'll be doing tapered foam like we have here. Our, our roof decks are flat. Basically, that roof is flat, so we'll have tapered foam, which will add R-value to the building, but that's how we'll also get the roof flattened out and pick up a little bit more slope. Facility Build is the general contractor. The roofer is actually a local contractor. So they've been working with us a lot on, on this, get us, get us some numbers that are within reason. It is a tear-off, and the only exclusion on the roofing also is there hasn't been asbestos inspection. So we will have to get an asbestos inspection, mostly for any mastic that's around vents, gas pipes, that kind of stuff. And if there is asbestos, then that'll have to be removed before we start the roofing. But we're still hoping to be done before winter time. There's, because of the added depth of the insulation, it's going to be about two inches at the overhang area and about 12 inches at the high side. We're going to have to raise gas lines, vents, things like that, mechanical issue, things like that. And so that's all part of the contract also. The inspection, the asbestos inspection and remediation is not part of it because we don't know how much there is or if there is. Any questions?
I have a question for you. Is there any other reason besides money that we're not going to do the entire roof at this time?
I believe right now, probably not, other than money. The section that's not being re-roofed is in fairly decent shape. It hasn't been maintained real well, but it's mineral dry, which has got the gravel on it. And then it's going to be significantly more expensive and difficult per square foot, not, probably not in total cost. It's a smaller area, but we had, back in 1990, I believe. No, when did I do that roof? Back in 2004, that's when I did that. When they remodeled, did the kitchen in there. So there's a new range hood, there's AC units, all the ducting is on top of the roof. Some of that may have to be removed in order to re-roof it. And so because of the roofing, there's just no access underneath some of that stuff. So that one is going to be a little bit more expensive, but this takes care of the immediate needs of the center, and then we can start developing our maintenance programs to work on that.
And is it fair to say, or accurate to say that some of the funding is coming from the community center's legislative efforts?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, they go out after grants all the time. So $90,000 was what they came up with, and the county has, has contributed the other $75,000 to.
Seventy.
Oh, 75 and 90.
Okay.
But, and that's kind of, one of the community centers, they go after stuff and they don't ask us what they actually need, and then we end up with these shortfalls.
Got it.
Luckily, we're at, the county was able to accommodate it because that building is in good shape. It's used a lot.
Yes.
And they do do maintenance on it, so it's, it's, it's a good project.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, did, what did, the capital outlay, what was the amount?
Seventy-five.
Seventy, oh, thank you. Okay. Yes, and as Richard has stated, that community center is well-used and used very well. And so this is definitely a plus. And I understand the concern that when they go out to ask for money, sometimes they, you know, it, it does create a little bit of a problem, but I will say that they're very, they're very good.
They're good.
Very active, and they've done a lot. So I think it's fair to say that they're taking care of themselves for sure, and that's good.
And Steve, this, in adding the R-values, Steve, what you were, program you're backing, we're, we're improving.
The efficiency of the building.
Yes. And that's what he's been preaching for a long, long time.
Great, thank you. Okay, any, anything else, any other questions? Okay, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the Contract TCC-2022-45 Facility Build Incorporated, TALPA Community Center Roof.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay, Department Matters, we've got District Four and District Five Health Council selections, and Mr. Cordova, Zach Cordova, H cap director is with us to present those names.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I do come before you this morning, mid-morning. We do have two vacant seats for our health council. This is part of their governing board, if you would. Per the bylaws or rules of procedure, it does state in Article Three, that it is under the, the membership positions that have been vacated before the end of an appointee term may be filled at the discretion of the county commissioners. So I come before you, and if I can follow suit on the agenda, I will start with District Four. Commissioner Brush's seat, that's up for the commissioner board, I mean, the Health Council Board, I'm sorry. I did put this out through our email. It's been out for about two months now. I think the last person that resigned, you know, we've taken time in doing this, we've gotten a couple of great letters of interest from members that are already in the healthcare membership, if you would. We do have two proposals. I did forward them to you, they are part of the agenda. I would like to mention, though, that the individuals that did submit letters of interest do understand and fully acknowledge the purpose, the mission, the vision and the values of the health council at this time. So I will start with District Four, and again, I want to go back to Article Three at the discretion, so I will leave it up to the Commissioners to either vote now, or if you would like another alternative method, maybe to send me an email. I, I'll leave that up to you, however you'd want to do it. But I do come before you asking for your approval in the two letters of interest for your seat at this time.
Vice Chair. Madam Chair, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Cordova. I know the health council has been evolving and you've all been very active, and I look forward to seeing even more being done. And the last member of the health council from my district stepped down because she took an awesome job with a political office with one of our congressional residents. So bit of a conflict, she was required to step down, which was sad. However, it's extremely exciting that you brought to us, to me this morning, two really interesting and qualified individuals, Haley Holm and Jose Gonzalez. And I know the first thing that I said to you was, can we have both, please?
I wish we could have.
Because their, their backgrounds, what they bring to the table, and I will, I will, I will acknowledge that I have not yet met Haley, but I look forward to doing that in the very near future, might give a call this afternoon. But, and I do know Jose, and like I said, I'm just, I'm just sort of sad and frustrated that they both can't be on the health council. That said, I would, this morning, in acknowledgement of all of that this person has been doing in the community and the perspective that he brings to the table, I would like to nominate Jose Gonzalez for this seat.
Thank you. And I do share the same sentiments as you.
It's a tough choice.
Both of them are outstanding candidates, our community. I do take assurance, though, that they are healthcare members, so they're not just a, you know, maybe not currently as a governing board, which I'll say will be now, but they are active and participants of the health council. So it's nice to have her on board as well. So that's an assurance for both of us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your vote and thank you for your time. I move on to District Five, and if I may, Commissioner O'Donnell, the same process was taking place, unfortunately, and if I can share this with you, I did receive one letter of interest. Now, I did kind of put a timeframe on there stating that I need the, the letters before getting them on the agenda for your approval, of course. I did have a couple of other candidates that reached out. I wasn't too sure if I should go on with this. I want to leave this, again, going back to Article Three, it is, it is at the discretion of your seat to make that. I would propose possibly, given it two more weeks, we, the health council is meeting tomorrow at 1:30, we are scheduled, a regular health council meeting. If, with your permission, of course, and the Commissioners, if you have any questions, I will answer them. But to put this out one more time, asking if they would submit that maybe by end of week, that way I can put it in ample time for the next two weeks for the next Commissioner meeting, so you to make a vote. But there is one letter of interest out right now, but again, going back to Article Three on the rules of procedures, it is at your discretionary. It's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd like that to be put out again to see if we get more people who are interested in my district. And do, does, do the people have to live in our districts?
And that's where, that's where the, the qualifications came from, because yes, they have to be part of District Five to reside in your district. And that's why, unfortunately, that was kind of the hiccup, if you would. They weren't too sure if they were in the Tous Canyon area, in that area, if what qualified is. So that's kind of where the delayed and the two late entries came through because of the qualifications in state that say you do have to reside in that district.
Okay, because I do see the, for District Four, the person in District Four does not reside in Commissioner Brush's district. Jose Gonzalez?
I'm almost certain, I will check on that, but I'm almost certain.
Because he lives in Rancho.
I think his post office box is in Rancho. I think that was the clarifying.
But he lives.
Yes, he lives in, in, in the district of, but for some reason, his appeal box is.
In El Prado? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that to attention and clarifying that as well. Thank you. So with your approval, then, you, just for the record, Commissioner O'Donnell, we will wait till the next Commissioner meeting to make a, a letter of interest and for you to make your.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I do stand for any questions at this time from the Commissioners, if you have any.
Mr. Cordova, thank you for bringing this forward. I, my only comment would be that in the future, once we have this entire team, and if we could have them come before us.
We're working on that. I know I have in the past. Our, our bylaws, our procedure does say quarterly. We did report, will be coming up this next quarter. We had Mr. Lawrence Medina and Jennifer on the go-to report last time, so I am working out to get that for the next one coming up. It's supposed to be quarterly, so I will attend to that.
Great, we just want to share to the public what great work is being done.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Parmy?
Thanks.
Oh, okay. Moving on, we are on, clarification, do we have to vote on Commissioner Brush's appointment or not?
The procedure, the bylaws do say it's at the discretion of the Commissioners for that one seat. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll possibly look for an answer, but it is at the discretion of the Commissioner in that district.
Right, and hence why I didn't ask for a vote, because it's really her decision.
Right.
And we don't want to definitely muddy the waters if we start.
All right.
Yes. Ms. Otio, are we, are we good on that? There's no reason to, to vote? Am I correct in saying?
It's, it's an unusual process, but I think it's fine to do it in that manner. And then if there is, I think it would be appropriate if there is an objection based upon qualifications, that that could be raised and then it be voted on. But if, if the Commission is okay with a person's appointment, I don't think we need a vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Always good to make sure we're doing the right thing. Okay, next, Presentation of Discussion Draft of Proposed Ordinance 2022-4, An Ordinance Establishing an Affordable Housing Program Persuaded to the Tous County Affordable Housing Plan, Defining Terms, Establishing Application Requirements and Review Criteria, and Establishing Procedures to Administer an Affordable Housing Program for the Purpose of Discussion and Feedback with and from the Tous County Board of Commissioners. And with us is Mr. Andy Jones, Senior Planner.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I'm pleased to announce the, this Mortgage Finance Authority-approved draft of the proposed Tous County Affordable Housing Ordinance for further discussion and comments prior to scheduling a public hearing on the issue. So this draft incorporate, incorporates feedback heard from you, the Board of Commissioners, during a May 12, 2022 workshop meeting that we had in these chambers, including language regarding the Housing Choice Voucher Program, language regarding the New Mexico Uniform Residential or Resident Relations Act, and increased affordability periods. As was discussed in May, this ordinance is a relatively straightforward document based on the New Mexico Affordable Housing Act and drafted from the Doña Anna County Ordinance provided by the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority for our use. The Tous County Affordable Housing Ordinance will codify the county's ability to circumvent the state anti-donation clause and leverage Mortgage Finance Authority funding and programs in order to provide funding to qualified individuals, businesses and nonprofit entities whose goal is to develop, build and provide affordable housing within Tous County. In addition to the latest draft, I attached the letter from the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority that approved this draft, along with a sample application form provided by MFA, which qualified grantees would use to apply for MFA funds that will be available for affordable housing projects if you should ultimately, ultimately adopt Ordinance 2022-4. So if this draft is acceptable to the Commission, we will proceed to the next agenda item, which will be the adopt, to adopt Resolution 2022-58. But first, we will stand for questions and discussion.
Any questions, Commissioners? It was quite the read, a lot of information. Thank you.
You bet.
And so if, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there are no questions, then we will go ahead and go on, move on to Item C.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Which is Tous, okay. Tous County Resolution Number 2022-58, Authorizing and Directing the Publication of the Title, General Summary and a Time, Date and Meeting Place for Discussion, Consideration and Action Upon Proposed Ordinance 2022-4, An Ordinance Establishing an Affordable Housing Program Persuaded to the Tous County Affordable Housing Plan, Defining Terms, Establishing Application Requirements and Review Criteria, and Establishing Procedures to Administer an Affordable Housing Program. Commissioners?
What's your opinion after the presentation?
So that's, that's a good question, and that's something Mr. Harmio and myself were discussing just a few minutes ago. You know, originally, as part of this resolution, I had intended to try and get this on the October 18 agenda, but early voting may be taking place in here, and we want to leave room for any potential, you know, public engagement and public involvement in the process at the public hearing. So we may, you know, want to push that out past, past the end of the early voting period or whatever works best for everyone. Brent, do you have any comments on that?
No, I think Mr. Jones said it correctly. Ms. Montoya emailed me earlier this morning informing the early voting starts October 11, and for space, it's easier to do it in here versus the large conference room and, and even for COVID-safe practices. What I had to sidebar with Mr. Jones is, could we anticipate a large number of community coming for? a large number of community coming for this public hearing? Because if we're anticipating a large number for the public hearing, then we would have to push this out till after the election. Uh, what I anticipated doing, what I expressed to Ms. Montoya this morning, is just having two rows, like we did during the primary election, pushing everything forward and then sectioning off for early voting and then, uh, being, uh, very careful on the agenda to what items are selected. So if, if we anticipate a big crowd, then we should hold off until after the general election.
Commissioners, I, I have no clue whether we're gonna have a, uh, right.
Madam Chair and Mr. Jones, maybe, maybe here's a, a clue to whether or not we're gonna have a, a big crowd. Could you just, like, in, in a nutshell, total, like, everyday, non-resolution language? Just share with, especially with folks who might be listening or might be listening to the recording eventually, like, what kind of tool this is for us? What is it gonna let us do?
Sure, sure, and that's a good question. And I'll, I'll try to speak in, in layman's terms, um, to the best of my ability. Um, but basically, because the state of New Mexico has an anti-donation clause, this is really just an enabling document, which means that it allows us to get around that anti-donation clause. Um, and, and make use of, primarily at this point, because we don't have any specific funding set aside for affordable housing, and hopefully we'll, we'll hit, um, you know, start, start something in the future. But at this point, we'll be in, be, uh, making use of funds available through the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority to, um, work with developers, work with individuals who maybe want to do, take, make use of their three building permits by right per parcel and do some kind of affordable housing. Um, MFA has these grants set aside, um, that these individuals, we can help them with the application process and get them moving toward providing some affordable housing, um, in exchange, you know, for a period of affordability, whether it's 10 years or 20 years or, or some other, um, term based on the size of the grant. And so I don't, I don't feel like that should be contentious. You know, I would love it if, if everyone came and, and said yay. And we support this 100%. Um, but, and you know, in terms of actual turnout, I don't, I don't have any, um, I don't have any idea, you know, whether people will show up for that.
So I was gonna reference to this.
Just a quick recap. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Andy. So what, what I'm hearing you say really nicely is that this is a tool for the county, both to take advantage of funding that's out there and for us also to offer up our investments, our assets, land, infrastructure investments, whatever we bring to the table, without getting caught up in other state things. So thank you very much. I know this took a lot of work. Um, and I know that you and the Planning Department put time and effort into making sure it fit our community and not just kind of like the regular old boilerplate. So I appreciate your work on it, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, and when I say there's, you know, the, right now, the county doesn't have any funding. You're right, we can, this does allow us to provide infrastructure. It allows us to waive fees. It allows us to donate land, um, all kinds of things.
Such as the ARPA money?
18 acres near the veteran cemetery. Or if we decide to do something next door in the nine acres that we acquired. Yeah, those would be good examples of being able to work with a developer and providing the land.
So, uh, Mr. Harmio, would this be also helpful in our efforts with the Taos Housing Partnership, uh, to, um, come up with solutions for housing? Would this somehow be able to, we'd be able to, uh, uh, this would basically help us to get through that?
Yes, this will be another tool in the toolbox, uh, that is needed. And that's why Mr. Jones is took, uh, taking this project on it, because we need this tool in the toolbox to work with potential developers and, and solving the housing problem that we have in Taos County.
And, and, oh, yes, Mr. Atio, and then I'll make my comment.
Just real quickly, I wanted to clarify for, uh, members of the public that are watching. So the reason why this is important, uh, to adopt a plan like this is for moderate and low-income folks. Uh, that's the key. Because, uh, as Mr., uh, Andy, sorry. So simple. Uh, as Andy said, um, the, uh, anti-donation clause in New Mexico prohibits donation of public monies as gifts to, to the public unless there's an exception met. And one of those exceptions is affordable housing for, uh, low and moderate income folks. So we have to pass this ordinance, cooperate with the state, uh, in order to implement it. So I just wanted to clarify, that's why we can't just give land or money or housing to everyone. Uh, it, it's just for those who are disadvantaged in the community by the high cost of housing.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Okay, Madam Chair?
Yes. I, I'd like to get this going, and I don't want a delay. And if we happen to get a big cry, uh, crowd, they can sit in the reception area and come in one at a time if they want to comment. So I don't see that as a hindrance. We need this, because then we got to move on to the short-term rental, which is gonna fund a lot of our projects. So please, yes. Are you looking for a date?
Um, I, you know, I was proposing the 18th originally, and, you know, before we had this discussion about the early voting and everything. Um, and if it, you know, so pleases the Commission, we can, we can stick with that date. And then I don't have to change the resolution, which is nice.
That works for me, Commissioners?
18th?
18th? And what, 9 o'clock or?
It's part of our regular Commission meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, and so I, and so I'll just go ahead and read the resolution in, into the record here. Um, so Taos County Resolution Number 2022-58, authorizing and directing the publication of the title, general summary, and a time, date, and meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action upon proposed ordinance 2022-4, an ordinance establishing an affordable housing program pursuant to the Taos County Affordable Housing Plan, defining terms, establishing application requirements and review criteria, and establishing procedures to administer an affordable housing program. Whereas Taos County, New Mexico, is a unit of local government under laws of the state of New Mexico, and whereas Taos County, New Mexico, affordable housing represents a critical component to enhance the quality of life of county residents, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County commits to exploring a range of options to promote affordable housing in Taos County, and whereas Goal One of the Housing Element of the Taos County Comprehensive Plan Update 2017 is to increase availability of affordable housing for all residents, and whereas, under an exception to the anti-donation clause as set forth in Article Nine, Section 14 of the New Mexico Constitution, the county is not prohibited from, A, donating or otherwise providing or paying a portion of the costs of land for the construction on it of affordable housing; B, donating or otherwise providing or paying a portion of the costs of construction or renovation of affordable housing, or the cost of conversion or renovation of buildings into affordable housing; C, providing or paying the costs of financing or infrastructure necessary to support affordable housing projects; or D, donating or otherwise paying a portion of costs of acquisition, development, construction, financing, and operating or owning affordable housing. And whereas the Affordable Housing Act, NMSA 1978-627-1, the Act implements provisions of subsections E and F of Section 14 of Article Nine of the New Mexico Constitution, and whereas the County Commission, the governing body of Taos County, desires to implement an affordable housing program for the county, and whereas the Commission has adopted an affordable housing plan through Resolution 2021-38 pursuant to the Act and the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority Affordable Housing Rules, and whereas this ordinance has been drafted in accordance, accordance with the Affordable Housing Plan, and whereas the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority has reviewed and approved the plan and the form and terms of this ordinance prior to the final adoption thereof. Now, for, now, therefore, be it resolved by the Taos County Board of Commissioners, the governing body of the County of Taos, New Mexico, that notice to be published in the Taos News that the Taos County Board of County Commissioners will conduct the regular meeting. The public will be able to participate to the fullest extent, either in person or virtually, beginning at 9:00 AM on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, to discuss, consider, and act upon proposed ordinance 2022-4, an ordinance, an ordinance establishing an affordable housing program pursuant to the Taos County Affordable Housing Plan, defining terms, establishing application requirements and review criteria, and establishing procedures to administer an affordable housing program. Two, the title and general, and a general summary of the subject of the proposed ordinance shall be published in the Taos News on September 29th, 2022. The Taos County Attorney shall make the necessary arrangements for publication. Three, the full text of the proposed ordinance shall be, be available by appointment for inspection and/or copying at a copy charge of 50, 50 cents per page at the Office of the County Clerk and the Taos County Planning Department. The document will also be available for download at www.tauscounty.org beginning on the first date of publication. And four, the notice shall include language providing contact information for individuals who require assistance to participate in the meeting.
Right. Commissioners, what are the wishes of the Commission?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize, um, that we direct the publication of the title, general summary, and a time, date, and meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action upon this proposed ordinance 2022-4. No, 2022-58.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Authorizing the direction and publication as stated, very well. Any further discussion? No?
Just briefly, I appreciate that it's for also low-income and that whoever the developer is would accept the federal voucher program.
Correct.
Because our current housing authority, separate from the county, has done a miserable job of providing housing. And I just want that to go on the record, that I've got units in my district that have not been rehabilitated for years, and they will not give an answer when those units will be rehabilitated. So they've done a miserable job. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaios?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Beal?
Yes. So next, thank you, Andy. Uh, next, and I know you're gonna remain there, because you've got lots more. So the next one is a request for a date and time to schedule a public hearing for the discussion, consideration, and action upon the request for a public easement vacation of Caia de Aguilah, excuse me, located within Highland Estates subdivision within lots 1 through 5, a block F, and lots 38 through 42, a block E, on the properties of Stephen and Ann Wing. Um, I'm not sure how to pronounce that last one.
Matier, I believe.
Matier, thank you very much. Yes, please.
Okay. I, I apologize that we, we get really wordy on some of these, I know. Um, so the next two items pertain to an issue that is, has been in the works for several years now, as Stephen Matier and Ann Wing Matier have been working with the Planning Department, first with former Planning Director Edward B. Hill, and now with myself, to proceed with their request for, for vacation. And so the result of several years of discussion between the Matiers, the Planning Department, and the Taos County Legal Department has resulted in what will be a two-step process that will be treated as two different vacation requests today and on the agenda for the public hearing. So the Matiers own 13 contiguous one-quarter acre lots in Highland Estates subdivision near Trace Piedras. Their lots are on the southern boundary of the subdivision and straddle the southern portion of Caia de Aguilah, which is a, uh, currently, you know, a public right-of-way, a public easement. And so in order to accomplish their goals, the Board of Commissioners will need to first consider a petition for determination of abandonment or vacation pursuant to New Mexico State Statute 67-2-7 that would vacate only the easement right-of-way known as Caia de Aguilah within the properties owned by the Matiers, beginning on the northern boundaries of the contiguous properties owned by the Matiers at Lot 5, Block F, and Lot 38, Block E, and continuing southward to the termination point of Caia de Aguilah on the southern boundary of the Matiers' properties, which is also the southern boundary of the subdivision itself. So since the Matier properties are on that southern boundary of Highland Estates, no other property owners utilize the affected portions of Caia de Aguilah right-of-way through the Matiers' properties. And so that would be, that, that's the first thing that will be on the agenda, and that's the first item that we're, um, looking to schedule a public hearing on, uh, the 18th in order to meet the, um, the window that we have. Um, the request for ca, vacation was filed in the County Clerk's office on August 31st, and that sets off a 60-day window in which we have to have the public hearing. And so in order to satisfy that requirement and also meet the 15-day notification requirements, this meeting needs to take place on the 18th of October.
Okay.
Or this public hearing, yeah.
An agreement?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Okay, and I don't believe it requires a vote, just an agreement that, and it appears that, uh, we don't have much choice, and so we need to get this done. So are we...
And this doesn't require a vote, is that right, Randy? That we just, yeah?
I know we do just...
Okay, okay, okay. So we'll, we'll do this one, we'll, we will vote to publish.
Okay, and we'll take it one at a time?
And then we'll do the next one.
Okay, so is there a motion to, to approve the date, um, that has been, uh, told to us, which is the 18th of this, of this month? Commissioners? Is there a motion?
Non-fair motion to schedule the public hearing on the 18th during our regular meeting.
A second? Motion and a second, uh, to schedule that hearing on October, I'm sorry, September 18th?
October 18th.
October 18th?
Yes.
My apologies.
That's okay.
At a Commission meeting, so, um, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaios?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Beal?
Yes. So next, next we have a request for a date and time to schedule a public hearing for the discussion, consideration, and action upon the request for vacation of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 40, 41, 42, a block F, and lots 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42, a block E, Highland Estates subdivision pursuant to the provisions of Section 9.3.2, Taos County Subdivision Ordinance 2005-8.
Correct, and so this is the second tier in the Matiers', uh, no pun, no, I don't know what, what that was, but tier, Matier, sorry. And so this is the second part of the process, whereas once the right-of-way has been vacated, you know, essentially by the county, um, then the Matiers are requesting to vacate their contiguous properties. Uh, I believe it's 13 lots, quarter-acre lots within, uh, Highland Estates. They're requesting to vacate that from the subdivision itself. And so that would be the second.
So in essence, it becomes one big, large piece of property.
It would be, yes. And then, and then once, once those lots are vacated, then they also, they already have a consolidation survey prepared, and they're gonna consolidate their properties into one large property.
At a future time?
Yes.
Yes, got it, okay. Commissioners? Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing?
So, yeah, second, and also a comment, I don't think we've ever had a notary from Nova Scotia that I could ever remember.
I saw that, yes. Okay, any, uh, discussion? No, seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaios?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Beal?
Yes. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are set to go there. Next, we have discussion, consideration, and decision regarding a 9.2% extraordinary increase pursuant to Exhibit B, Section D, Point 1 of the Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreement between Taos County and Waste Management of New Mexico, Inc., effective, uh, for September 2022. And, uh, with us today is, um, Dan Darnell. Yes, New Mexico Public Sector Solutions.
Is he the owner of Waste Management?
Mr. Harmio, did you want to add anything before, Mr.?
No, uh, probably, uh, Mr. Darnell could probably explain this rate increase a lot, heck of a lot quicker than I could. Waste Management, uh, of New Mexico does a good job as far as doing the research, and I've never seen them push a rate that, uh, they didn't have justification for. And it is part of the process, part of the terms of our agreement, which is included in, in the packet. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Darnell.
Welcome, Mr. Darnell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, commissioners, glad we did see you. It was nice to meet Vice Chairman Brush and Chairman Vehill. I hadn't met you before, so that was nice. So we're coming today, and believe me, I don't like any rate increases any more than anybody else, but we really feel that this is something that we need to, that we need to push because of the environment that we're in. So Waste Management's agreements included an annual price adjustment as well as other mechanisms like fuel adjustment, perhaps, something like that. But then they also have provisions that allow us to petition the governing body to offset things like inflationary pressures, things that we're seeing of extraordinary nature, and that's really what we're looking at here. It's the things that we've been absorbing over the last year, and typically, the only time will come before a council or a commission for a rate adjustment is at the annual anniversary date of the contract, and I think that's an appropriate time rather than coming mid-year. So these are inflationary pressures that we have been experiencing all year and have been absorbing, and at some point in time, this is our opportunity to come and ask for an adjustment on the contract. And this is under Section D1, Exhibit B, it's called the discretionary pricing provision. And I'm sure you guys have the documentation, but basically what that says is, "Request for rate adjustments may also be made in the event of changes in Waste Management's cost of doing business pursuant to this agreement, such as newer revised laws, ordinance, or regulations, or other industry rate-related reasons." And so we are here respectfully requesting the county approve this 9.2 extraordinary increase, which would equate to approximately $2.77 to the rates of the average rate payer. And of course, I say approximate because we're using that pricing, we're using the Area 1 first car pricing, but it's approximately $2.77 increase. And I just want to share some additional information, if I could, concerning the cost of the increases that we're seeing in our industry. As you know, everybody's lives have been adversely impacted by COVID, by inflation, and now inflation's at a 40-year high. We don't know where it's going to go from here, but understand, we won't come back to ask for any additional increases. We'll absorb those costs as the year goes by until our next opportunity, which would be the next anniversary date. But we've seen, we've seen fuel increase, incredibly so. We've seen the cost of metal. Trucks are, and we're a large company, so we have an opportunity to really put pressure on factories to produce equipment when we need them, and they're 18 to 24 months out to get new equipment. So what we've had to do is we've had to endure keeping our fleet on the ground, and you have to invest in your fleet. You know, we only have service to provide. If we're not able to provide that service, then it's obvious that we're, you know, we're not going to be able to, you know, maintain the contract. So basically, by way of explanation, we look at our cost of doing business. Now, first of all, most contracts, we use some kind of an escalator like Consumer Price Index, and Consumer Price Index is what we call a lagging economic indicator. And the reason we say that is because I believe in our contract, we're using the annual rate from 2020 and 2021, and that's what the contract is adjusted on. PPI is Producer Price Index, and that's the actual, that's the leading economic indicator, and it shows us where we're at and what the cost, what our cost is to do business. Now, the PPI right now is sitting at 14.9, or as of the writing, it's actually higher than that now, but it's 14.9 when we submitted this documentation to the county. And so what we did was, we took the cost that we were already, you know, passing on to the, through the contract, passing on, and we subtracted that from the 14.9, and that's where we actually came up with the 9.2% gap between our actual cost of doing business and that. So that's basically where the 9.2% came from. And again, we're respectfully requesting that the county approve that 9.2 extraordinary increase, and I'll stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Certainly, we can relate to increases, right? Not happy, but certainly they do exist. We deal with it all the time, and I don't know about you all, but if someone can pick up my trash, it's really bothersome to see it piled, so, yeah. Commissioners?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you, Mr. Darnell. Maybe not such happy circumstances. The 9.2 increase is a franchise fee, or you're passing this directly on to the consumers who have collection with Waste Management?
Yes, that'll be in the rates themselves, so.
It's not a franchise fee? Okay. Do you have a lot of clients in Penasco?
We have clients all over.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't tell you exactly, I mean, we have in Penasco, but we are in Penasco.
Are you able at some point to give the manager how many customers you have in each of these districts? Is it in here?
No, no, it wouldn't be in this documentation.
Is there any chance if things drop, gas prices drop, and you would reduce these rates, this extraordinary increase? Is there any kind of clause that you would lower the rates?
You know, I don't see a clause specific to that, but I would come back before the commission, you know, we're a good company, and we just want to be fair. And I wouldn't be here asking for the 9.2 if that wasn't something that I felt was necessary to keep our trucks on the road. And, but yes, if things go down, I'd be more than happy to come and discuss that very issue with you.
Promise?
No, certainly. I just said it. I just said it.
Okay, and Mr. Darnell, I just want to thank you for you stepping up in Penasco to pull our bins out of the Chomisol Transfer Station. You saved us many times, and I hope you continue until we can get up to speed in our staffing because that has helped a lot. I'm not getting quite as many complaints as I used to with the station being closed, so I appreciate that. I wanted to thank you for that.
Anything we can do to help, Brent knows all he has to do is call us.
You can send us, we'll hire some of your drivers.
There's one problem with, well, there's one problem with that, though. You have DOT hours, Department of Transportation hours, so they can't exceed a certain number of hours, so that is an issue.
Can I ask you what you pay your drivers? I know I'm getting off topic, but.
Yeah, I don't know that we can at this point, so maybe you want to talk to them up?
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the 9.2% extraordinary increase pursuant to Exhibit B, Section D, 1 of the non-exclusive franchise agreement between Taos County and WM.
Is there a second? There's a motion on the floor.
He's looking hard.
A second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the 9.2% extraordinary increase and pursuant as stated, and it's a hard one, but we all know that it's necessary, so. Okay, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaios?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Vehill?
Yes. Okay, do we want a few-minute break here? Can I, I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute break.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaios?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Vehill?
Yes, thank you. Ready to go? Okay, so we are now recording, and we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to come into, back from break, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaios?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Vice Chair Brush? Yes.
Chair Vehill?
Yes. Okay, so moving on, we are at 15, which is consent agenda. A is approval of budget adjustment for H cap 0220-1940 to appropriate budget for the Safety Net Airpool, SNCP, for fiscal year 23. And then we have Item B, approval of budget adjustment for the Office of Emergency Management 0101-1810 to appropriate budget for per diem for mandatory training/events for fiscal year 23. C is approval of a budget adjustment for solid waste 0202-1610 to appropriate budget for the Waste Management Services pickup and transfer sites for fiscal year 23. D is approval of Resolution 2022-59, a resolution authorizing requesting participation and funding in the New Mexico Department of Transportation of fiscal year 2022-23 Transportation Project Fund Program. E is approval of a budget adjustment for human resources 0101-1010 to appropriate budget for the expenditure of a comprehensive and classification study. F is approval of a budget adjustment for County Commission 0101-0110 to appropriate budget for the expenditure of per diem expenses for County Commission for fiscal year 23. Commissioners, what are your wishes? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve as read, the consent agenda, call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaios?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Vehill?
Yes. Next is, before us is approval of a budget adjustment, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. It is County Managers' Report on Matters, my apologies, update to County Commission on various items affecting Taos County. Mr. Haremu?
Thank you, Chair Vehill, members of the commission. Last week, myself, Chair Vehill, and Vice Chair Brush, along with Rachel and Rudy Perea from the Planning Department, attended the New Mexico Housing Summit. It was one of the best conferences that I've attended in quite a few years. We were dividing and conquering, there was numerous workshops, there was up to six workshops per session, so there was a lot of, said divide and conquer, and there was a lot of great general sessions as well. We've heard from two different motivational speakers. I would, the second one on Friday, we did ask to come and present here at the county for the county employees, and we look forward to that in the future, but it was a very well-put-together housing summit, and talked a lot about like the ordinance that we just passed. They said we were on pending status, we're there, so a lot of good things that we're working on. We will, with the Taos Housing Partnership, those are also being discussed at the, were being discussed at the Housing Summit. Rennell's going to bring down in a little bit, well, actually, I don't think we have it yet. I gave my, I had a PowerPoint regarding the Housing Partnership, I gave mine to, that's a one-pager, and we're also, maybe she did already, but I gave my copies to Senator Gonzalez last week. The senator also attended the conference as well. Mayor Maestas, Andrew Gonzalez was there, Sonia Strzok from the Moore Foundation, Lisa Ryan, so the community was well-representative. Izzy Hernandez, from the executive director for the Mortgage Finance Authority, thought it was a good showing from Taos County that we took so many people up there as well. As we stated earlier, early voting is October, begins on October 11th here in the County Commission chambers, so we'll work with the clerk's office in getting the appropriate signage up as well as on Facebook and the website as well. We'll look forward to getting that done. I'm going to be working with Felicity Phone Sec from North Central Economic Development District, two different grants, or three different grants. We'll meet early afternoon regarding the New Mexico Grant Capacity Grant process that's due at the end of the week. The purpose of that grant is secure grant managers, the grant writers, for local governments that are seeking funding. And then we've also exchanged emails regarding, we have to do an update to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was last updated in 2017, so that's on a five-year cycle. So I have asked Felicity to work with, what I'm going to try to do is, there's a $50,000 Finance Authority grant, and then there's also a grant from Local Government Division for another $50,000. And so I was asking Chris, is if there's a possibility of combining both grants. It doesn't make sense to me that, I've been in local government for almost 20 years now, and about 18 years ago, I did a planning grant for a comprehensive plan, and the grant amount then was $50,000. It was $50,000 in 2017, and the cost of doing business for a consultant has certainly increased, so in my mind, it only, and Chris didn't see the reason why we couldn't combine two grants into one, but we'll see if that's possible, but it's something that we need to get done and that we're working on. The Village of Taos Ski Valley is requesting the county to contribute up to $20,000 for the winter bus route. I believe the town of Taos is in for 10. Ski Valley, Village Ski Valley is in for about $60-some thousand, and Ski Valley Incorporated is in for about another $80,000. Something that the North Central Regional Transit District Board did approve at their last meeting to enter this agreement with the village. I was trying to push back a little bit on this, and I know Mr. Avila from the village was trying to push back on the RTD as far as them funding more of it versus it coming out of the town and the county and the village's budget, but we didn't meet with any success on that part. I'll pass out the proposed schedules here, and if you would like a presentation, I'm sure Mr. Avila from the Village of Taos Ski Valley would be happy to do so, and need to meet with him a little bit later this week, as well as Ms. Armijo finalizing our budget numbers that we want to contribute to. So one of the things on my, on my schedule for this week, I did meet with Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Haremu yesterday. We are discussing doing a, another community meeting on October 6th for the historic county courthouse. I've checked with the Chamber of Commerce, there's no, it's a Thursday, there's no conflicts with anything that the chamber's doing. They have something on the 5th, but not on the 6th. on the sixth. And I just, and so I just want to make sure that's, no conflicts or anything in the community is, as well.
Madam Chair, Mr. Harmio, do you want to know that, that's the, right in the middle of the Outdoor Economics Conference, so I don't know how many of our local folks that affects, but there's probably a dinner or something that night that...
There's, there's a dinner that night, but... So like I said, we're tentative looking at that too, because we also needed to talk to Doug, and I, I didn't want to say anything until we had Doug Patterson on board with it.
Yeah, if we could stay away from that date, that's a really busy week, isn't it, conference?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
We're, we're pretty much, we're getting closer to getting ready to go to construction, it's kind of where there's a little bit of pressure.
Oh, got it, okay, I understand. We don't want to, we don't want to prohibit that or change that in any way, so, yeah.
Then Renell should have put on your desk, I already got an email three times today from the town of Red River, making sure that I tell you guys about the ribbon cutting ceremony on September thirtieth. There's a famous skateboarder that is coming to Red River, and they're gonna have a ribbon cutting for their, for their facility. At the skate park, if Renell hasn't brought it down, she'll bring it down shortly. It's a skate park and pump track. There's an Olympic medalist by the name of Mariah Duran, that's from New Mexico, that will be the special guest. So, so that's September thirtieth at two o'clock.
Then we should probably post a potential forum for that as well, because it would be nice to, to certainly be there. Oh, you're not gonna be here. Okay. Yeah, sorry.
Yesterday, I did meet with Lauren Bell and Carl Colonius. Carl is no longer with the Enchanted Circle Trails Association. Carl did cover some of the past work. The Chair and Vice Chair were also in attendance at this meeting. We've agreed that we renew the contract for renewal to, for a year or two, and that'll be for fifteen thousand dollars. So we talked about New Mexico one fifty at length, and we also did discuss the top book traverse, as well as the Outland Link were main topics of discussion yesterday. Public Works is preparing for winter service, so they're already working on the score yet, getting ready for winter, so there is, they're just getting ready for winter. I do have one more thing, but I stand for questions first before I do my one more thing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to go on the record that I am totally against any of these fifteen thousand dollar funds going towards legal fees, the outward link. I've looked at all the documents, the private property owners are in their right. I think it's sad that Enchanted Circle thinks they can bypass the town and do their own lawsuit, so I want to make sure none of those funds go towards any kind of legal against my constituents who live in the county, and I will oppose any such reimbursements for legal fees, because that's a misadvised lawsuit that has no bearing based on all the documents I've seen. So they don't have a legal ground to stand on, so please don't give them any money for lawsuits, thank you.
We intended for New Mexico one fifty for them to continue the work and for the kiosks as well, so that's where our money is going to.
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Harmio. On, on a different note, you mentioned the winter bus route, and I know we typically do contribute to, to that, going up to the ski valley, because it helps our folks who work here, and helps visitors who might stay at Tuskegee County or at an Airbnb in town. Question for you, and it doesn't have to be answered right now, but just like throwing it out there as something we need to know. I'm, I'm not sure what kind of agreement we have to utilize the Arroyo Seco Community Center parking lot for, with either RTD or with the ski valley, because that does become employee and skier overflow and gets pretty full, and the community called their own meeting last, last week on the thirteenth, and they're getting more active about uses of that community center. There's a steering committee that they formed that last Tuesday evening, so I just wanted to throw that out there, is like, do we have some kind of agreement that, that parking is free and available for all takers, or could we potentially look at some kind of agreement? Because maybe if there is a little bit of, of compensation for the use of that county land, it could go toward the building's needs. Just a thought, throw that out there.
Chair of the Hill, Vice Chair Brush, Commissioner Fambro probably recalls this better than, than I do. There used to be an agreement between RTD and the county for the use of that community center. I think that was before my time as manager, but I remember they did have an agreement with the county, and we could probably talk to Mr. Mortarano about getting that done as well.
Thank you, that'd be great, and I just, I don't mean to say that that shouldn't be used that way at, at all. I'm all for carpooling buses and getting more cars off the road to get people where they need to go, like up the mountain. Just wanted to make sure that we, we're heading toward a situation where that community center is going to be more active, so let's just go into it with eyes open. Thank you.
Do, do we have any idea, this is probably not something you might know right off the top, but how many people actually utilize that bus to go work at Tuskegee Valley? Do we have any idea?
I could get that number for you.
Okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. It would just be very interesting, as we're putting in public money, how much of the public is actually utilizing that.
Right, and I know, and I don't have it in none of the emails that I've got, but I know they, I saw that information last year when they asked for money, but we could get that information.
Thank you. Anything else for Brent before he proceeds? Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Do you have more?
Go ahead.
I'll wait until after he...
No, go ahead with yours, because...
You know how I hate reading in the paper things that the county's doing? One of them was the Arroyo Seco Community Center meeting? Did that happen?
It, it did, Commissioner O'Donnell, but that was not a county meeting. That was a community-driven, community-called meeting, that was, there were signs up all over, it was in the paper, but that was not a county-initiated meeting.
Okay.
It was not our business.
But is it true, in what the paper said, that we have commissioned an engineering study on the building?
No, well, I don't know how the paper said it, but as you may recall from another commission meeting, we reported that myself, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Silva, and Chair and Vice Chair attended a meeting with Joe Sanchez from WH Pacific to tour the building, and Joe is gonna give us a estimate to do a report on the building.
Okay.
So that's what we reported to the Tuskegee News, as we were gonna get that.
And you had mentioned that, Mr. Harmio, that meeting happened the last week of July, and that you follow, in your following, the manager report immediately following, you had mentioned that.
Okay, and another item was, I also read in the paper that Miles Bonney is getting the ambulance updates of overdose deaths and overdose calls, and I don't see why we're not getting it if Mr. Medina's giving it to Miles. I really want that data, and I hate to read that it's going out to Miles and not any of the commission, and also the same goes for the road, weekly road. I don't know why we can't just get these weekly road list updates. Mr. Silva had started, and all of a sudden, he stopped sending them. I don't know what, why you keep for years, you keep denying us the right to just look at what our road department is doing. So I, I'm gonna ask you one more time. I still have three months, I want to see those, you know, weekly, what each road department's doing, so I can have it if a constituent calls. I'm not gonna use it against anyone, so I don't get why this has become such an issue. I keep asking, nobody listens to me. I want those weekly reports, please.
With all due respect, Commissioner, in the past, you were telling Mr. Lopez what to do and what not to do.
I was not, that's not true. I have never done that, I have never done that.
Mr. Lopez has reported that to us on numerous occasions. It's not your role as a county commissioner to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the county. The road maintenance is a day-to-day operations of the county.
So we can't see what's going on, and I have never, you know what? I have just pointed out so-and-so called about a particular road. I've never told him to go do something. If he does something, then that's his problem, not mine. And again, you want to keep the commission, and the incoming commission in the dark, is what roads are being worked on? You go right ahead.
As, as you're well aware, Commissioner, is you're not to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the county. The roads is in day-to-day operations, you're here to make policy, like you did with the thirty-by-thirty resolution, that is your role, and it's your role also looking at affordable housing. Those are two good examples of the role of a county commissioner.
Well, it's your role to keep us informed, so we have transparency, so that's what I'm asking. I want to know, and I don't see what your issue here is, as, you know, you withhold a lot of information from us now. Yes, you do.
I do not hold any information.
Madam Chair, this is inappropriate.
Right, and I'm gonna go ahead and stop it right there and ask that, that we, you know, continue forward, we certainly don't want to be doing this, it's not appropriate, and those conversations could be had offline. I, I will say that it's important to remember, commissioners, and I, I think we have to often tell ourselves that we don't deal with the day-to-day functions, and there's some rationale in, in when road department is determining what needs to be done. So we'll leave it at that, and let's go forward, thank you. Mr. Patterson.
So my last item was on behalf of the county staff, we would like to wish Commissioner Fambro a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, can, can we see? Happy birthday, Commissioner Fambro, we are so happy that we can report your sixty-two, let the record reflect. Happy birthday. Okay, so are we ready to move on? Okay, great. Okay, so next is Commissioners' Report on Matters, and we are on item seventeen A, which is new business to, to be considered at future commission meeting. Anyone want to add?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Over the past five years, this governing body, the past commissioners, had supported the idea of getting a new senior center location partnered with the Village of Questa. Tuskegee County went and got a GO bond approved, supported. Over the past three years, we've, have had no such luck moving forward with it. At the same point, the Village of Questa partnered, as a partner, in my past position as mayor, we've seeked out another seven hundred and fifty thousand. To my position that I'd asked this governing body to consider that we'd make a presentation, make a request to the Village of Questa to become the fiscal agent of their seven hundred and fifty thousand, I feel that the county has the strength in staff and the ability through their departments respectively to get this project moving forward, so that the senior center location at La Senega Schools, that's owned by the Village of Questa, can be moving forward. There is probably some time that we need to reach out to the village, but I'd ask that this governing body would consider that, maybe, Mr. Harmio, would that be in a form of, of an action item that we'd be able to go propose to the village, that they'd consider this as an option for the county? I just, you know, we have six hundred, close to six hundred thousand dollars that we need to spend, and, and I think that's gonna, the village's seven hundred and fifty can assist in seeing some good flow to get that location in somewhat of an operation.
We could probably do that, Chair, you know, Commissioner guys could probably do that in a form of, of an action item.
Thank you. Also, that, that actually be the only thing I need to, to bring as far as new business to be considered, or if, if you do hear of something in the form that Mr. Harmio makes a request or presentation to the village, or if I, with your approval, have that forwarded to me, so I can speak with the village council and the mayor to decide if they would wish to do so. I wouldn't want to do, take any action unless you guys would support that.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else? I would like to, it's, it's not necessarily new, but to bring back the Ag Resolution. I, I think that there's been some time to kind of digest that, I need some, sorry, some to digest, she works very hard every day on this, keeping things in, in order, scheduled, but want to bring that back. I just want to remind us, I know that there's other priorities, but at the same time, we don't want to forget, and I know Manager Harmio, I'm sure you don't forget, because we're too quick to remind you of these things, but also received a phone call on the largest tax board, so I wanted to also remind us that we've yet to address that, and anytime someone calls and asks, you know, when are we going to be able to, you know, ask, presenter asks, it, it's just, just kind of heartbreaking that we're not there yet to, to do that. So I just want to point those two things out that I think need to be brought back at some point, and with all due respect, I understand there are other priorities, but let's not forget. That's it. Anything else, commissioners, that you'd like to be brought forth under Commissioners' under new business? Seeing none, let's move on to Commissioners' announcements. And Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I have, I have a handful, if I could beg your all's patience. First, it's, it's National Voter Registration Day, so I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our Madam Clerk and her office, and I would like, thank you for all of your work getting people to vote and to get registered. I'd also like to encourage everybody in this meeting, because I'm gonna assume that those of you online and in the room are registered, but think of a handful, two, three people that you know today who moved, changed their name, did something, and check with them today, make sure they're registered. Second announcement, Legislative Finance Committee of the state is meeting tomorrow morning up in the ski valley. I was asked as Vice Chair to give the opening remarks to that group, so I want to invite the commission and our administration. If there's something you want me to say, let me know today, and I'm happy to, open, open to all ideas, still looking for that theme. Absolutely. Thank you, Jim, thank you. A couple of other things, I will be signing a letter of support for the El Salto Mutual Domestic Water Association. They are going, seeking Water Trust Board approval from the state, which if that approves it, it will move on to the NMFA for two hundred and forty-eight thousand to upgrade metering. What that is aimed at doing is basically conservation, they'll be able to find leaks, we have lots of leaks. I was asked, because I'm a, I'm a customer of that mutual domestic, we have plenty of leaks, so they want to upgrade system functioning in a way that will replace old equipment and let them identify water leaks sooner. We heard earlier today about energy efficiency, I also really want to promote water efficiency, so I'm going to be signing that for them, and I would also encourage other mutual domestics out there to take advantage of that funding, should they be interested. No guarantee, I think there are a lot of requests to the state engineer... No guarantee, I think there are a lot of requests to the state engineer's office this year, but a couple of other things. I was asked by the Land and Water Conservation Fund and the Trust for Public Lands to go to Washington DC next week to talk about our Rio Grande de Norte monument and the, if you remember, the Clower property that we had discussed earlier this year. So basically about conservation in our community. So I'll be there next Wednesday and Thursday, talking to folks. Again, if you, if there's things you want me to raise up about land conservation in our community, please let me know before next Wednesday. And last thing, I meant to mention this in citizen comments, but we can do that next meeting, too. I know that on a couple of our last meeting agendas, we've had executive sessions where we've gone in and talked about the manager's evaluation. And I just want to put that out there because we all see that. And if you're not in that executive session, which very few people are, you wonder like, what the heck's going on? And you talk and you wonder and you talk some more. By contract, we're required to give Brent a review annually. And because it hasn't been done recently, this commission has been really thorough and careful about, okay, how do we want to do it? What was the process before? What's the process going forward? What are we going to do? That's basically where we're at. And it's, you know, it's just to the extent of being as transparent as we can, that's why that's been an agenda item, just because we are contractually obligated to do that and we want to be really thoughtful about how. So that's all I have. Thank you for indulging me a few minutes.
Commissioners, have anything to add? Okay. I just wanted to let you all know that Commissioner Rush and I attended a firefighter residential academy training in Red River. And I want you all to know that we actually geared up and realized that the equipment that was put on my body weighed more than me and could never do this. We have photos, it was pretty funny, but yes, in all seriousness, very inspired, very, very rewarding, too. You know, I've always had an appreciation for what firefighters do and how they put themselves out there, but there is a lot to it. And truly did see a very small sliver of what they go through, but I will tell you, I have a greater appreciation. So Jonah Latier, Fire Chief, excuse me, walked us through almost every little bit of the day, and so very appreciative of that opportunity.
Do you know why God made firefighters?
Why?
So cops could have heroes.
Okay. Whoa.
It's your birthday. It's your birthday.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fambro and probably former Mayor Gaias can speak to it better than I can. There's, what you geared up on is, it does come out to be pretty expensive, and it also has to be replaced every few years.
Right.
So that is a big expense on the fire department side. And it's a lot of times why they're doing fundraisers and is because they can't afford the gear or specialized equipment. And by national standards, they have to be replacing it every so often. And Commissioner Fambro knows that better than anybody here.
Mr. Hadamio, that's a great point. I think it's also, I like to mention that Chris Medina, our EMS director, was actually there doing the training. And it was pretty neat to see him, you know, lead the way in that regards. And I think I was also reminded that, that often we forget that EMS is a big part of public safety and part of that component. We don't realize sometimes, but there's a lot that's going on there. And I think we need to remember that at every turn and every opportunity to help them get that funding that they need. They're saving our lives, really. They're literally taking care of us, so we don't want to, we want to always remember that. Also, we are going to be attending, and I say we as in Commissioner Rush and I, there is a invite to talk with the Carson National Forest. That's, I think, on Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, at 10:30. It's just, you know, I will tell you that it's been an, I guess, the beginning of a dialogue on Carson National Forest and Taos County and community members on, you know, with the, what the community sees going forward with Carson National Forest. I think it's been a welcoming conversation, as we all know. In the past, it hasn't always been like that. And so we now have an opportunity to open those lines of communication, break down those silos and see what we can do together. And so that's happening on Thursday. But Commissioner Rush, I'm going to turn this part over to you because I don't have my paper, so if you have it, would you be able to read it?
That's fine, Madam Chair. Thank you. And again, just to make sure that we are all on the board are aware of these things before, before we read them in the paper, there, there was a letter sent out to both the Chair and myself, as Chair and Vice Chair, to participate in the Carson National Forest Northern New Mexico Traditional Community Listening Session to review policy and their plans. And this is, I think, a repeat of what I guess they did in 2017, maybe some of you were part of that. But it's an all-day panel with all kinds of folks from Rio Riba, from here, from the land grants, JR was invited. It is scheduled to take place on October 6th, all day, which again is in conflict with the Outdoor Economics Conference. But, but just so you all have the heads up that that invite has gone out to us. And that sounds like, if anyone wants a copy of the proposed agenda, we're happy to share those because it looks like an outstanding event.
That is all I have at this time. So let's, seeing none others wanting to come forward, let's go to.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
When you have the opportunity to go speak with those at Carson National Forest, ask if they can be a little, they'd be able to be more open and helpful with any recreational permits for economic opportunity. A lot of times, there's, there's potential for a lot of these forest lands to be used for some recreational activity, whether they're bike courses. I know that in Angel Fire and certain parts in Taoski Valley, there's, it's a lot of private land. People ask what's going on, how come they can do those things?
Right.
But they don't know that that's private land. But there's just equally amount as much opportunity if you can have some recreational economic opportunities as well. So you can talk to them about how we can, they can kind of promote that. And that'll be good stewardship between private individuals, you know, just like the ski areas, get those permits while I think there should be some opportunity for other permits to go through. Thank you.
Great point. Thank you. And certainly Commissioners, if you have any other questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to let us know. We'll be more than happy to, to ask those questions, present those concerns. Okay, Board Committee reports. We've got North Central Regional Transit District Board. Commissioner Fambro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hadamio covered part about the ski valley route has been restored, and that's also everything between here and there. So it's, I mean, they just refer to it as GO because that's the end destination, but residents of Royceco and between here and there, El Prado, they will be using it, too. The other kind of exciting thing that they're launching, they call it a micro-transit project. And it's in the Taos and Espanola area, launching in November of this year. So between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, there's two zones, one in Espanola and our zone actually is broke up into two zones. It's a dollar per trip. From within the zone, it's $5 to the airport. They'll pick you up at your door and take you somewhere between those hours. Let's say you, you're flying on Taos Air and you don't want to leave your vehicle out there at the airport. You call this place, there'll be an app that they will send out and a lot of press in the near future. You schedule your trip, what time you need to be there. Or, you know, it's even as silly as, it goes all the way up to pass the golf course to the intersection of 110 and Los Corbolas. It goes to the tennis ranch, the airport. It also goes to the pueblo. So a tourist that's staying at the Hampton wants to go to the pueblo, they schedule this, they're going to pay a dollar, they're going to take them to the pueblo and they're going to pick them up whenever it's scheduled. So it's kind of cool. I've got the map and stuff, but they're going to be sending these out in probably the next Blue Bus time, so I'll have Renell forward that to you. But it's a big area. If this works, you know, we can see that it would expand in certain areas up north. And there's already something like this in Santa Fe through Santa Fe Trails, so that's why it's not included. And La Salamos has their own also. So that was kind of exciting. Not going to cost a lot. It would be like a Venmo transaction. If you miss two appointments, you get kicked out of the system for a month because they don't want to be tying up units for this. So the other thing is they had the ribbon cutting for the Espanola maintenance facility. The preliminary drawings for the Taos maintenance facility are almost complete and we're awaiting funding, I think, looking for, it was either seven or 11 million on this. And, and they've, they've put in, we approved some grant applications. One was 3 million and one was something else at the meeting as well. So that micro-transit thing, once people get used to it, that would be, I see it as something that's going to be beneficial to our constituents. That's all I have from that meeting.
Ray, thank you. May I ask Commissioner Fambro a couple of questions? That's, the micro-transit thing is really exciting. You know, as someone who shares a car, I could definitely use that now and then. Do you know how many, like in the, in the Taos area, how many vehicles are going to be dedicating to that service?
Initially, they did not say. I know they have the, for pair transit, now they have the van that goes outside the buffer zone. And I think they have two of those now. So there's two currently doing a similar thing. For someone that wants to get to the senior center doctor's office and so, and those are free of charge. You know, this is kind of a leisure thing. So they'll have those two vehicles at first, and then if the demand is higher, they'll get more.
Excellent. Thank you. And my only other question is about the new maintenance facility. Is that being, or has that been designed with a kind of a perspective on the future that buses will be transitioning to be electric going forward?
Yes. And the whole building is going to be, there's a term that they use on, I mean, there's, there's water catchment devices throughout the building for roof renovation. It's going to be primarily solar. It's, it's going to be something that I think would meet our expectations on the energy efficiency. And it looks a little different, but I think it'll grow. And if you're wondering where it's going to be, it's just the parcel just north of the Ag Center. So directly across the street, the back of the Ag Center is going that way. That's where it's going to be.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Sounds exciting. Things evolving, right?
Yes.
So Intergovernmental Council, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes. Briefly, we had the Director of the Outdoor Economics Conference present, Jeff Steinborg. He gave us an update on the events, the activities. We are registered, I guess there's 10 from Taos County that are registered. The dinners are included, light snacks, I guess, at the country club and then at the ski valley. That's included in the price. You do need to sign up for the different excursions if you want to participate. So you have to go online and sign up. Last Thursday, they had about 100 people registered, but they'll all be coming in at the last minute. And so that was very informative. We continue to have a great attendance at the Intergovernmental Council. Everyone to attend those three days and to let people know in the community if they want to participate, they should sign up and register because they're going to have dynamite speakers, some coming from out of state. It's going to be a great way to boost our outdoor recreation economy. Thank you.
Do, is there an agenda already?
It's, everything is up online, yes.
For some reason, I couldn't pull it up. I did try, so it's just, it's probably me, obviously. But it's also $120 for the community each one?
No, we, we have 10 tickets for 125, is my understanding. We're all signed up?
Right. The, where Renell's getting stuck with you guys is, is wanting to know what you're going to do on Friday.
Okay. That's the events? That's the event?
You can't finish the registration.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So I, for example, there's the Lama track.
River rafting is what I was going to do.
I told Renell yesterday to put you down for the river rafting and then she put me down for the river rafting.
So we're all going to be river rafting?
And so I thought it, I thought it'd be a good team thing to do.
It's going to be interesting to get all the things.
Yeah. I think it'd be good, all of a sudden, the same rafting, if somebody falls out, what do we do?
I don't want to be on the river rafting because have you seen how low the water is? We'll be walking most of the time. So I, what was the other one? The Lama excursion and what else?
The Lama excursion, Taos pueblo.
And there's a hiking also adventure.
There's a hiking.
I did the Lama excursion. Can you let Renell know or should we go upstairs and let her know?
We should probably.
Let her know, but whoever wants to talk to her afterwards, because I know that's where she was getting stuck.
Okay.
And why she hadn't completed the registration, because she wanted to know. To me, it should be optional because I don't know if everybody's going to go to these events. And some of them were already getting filled up, too, she was saying.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Thank you for.
Thanks for clarifying because it was a little confusing.
And so to talk to Jeff yesterday, the dinner was included and it's part of the 10 tickets.
Okay, great.
Have fun.
Okay. So, but you did indicate that the public can participate?
They can register. They do have to pay the 125.
Okay, got it.
If they want to attend the three-day event. Maybe, I don't know if they have separate tickets for the days, but.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Commissioner O'Donnell? Seeing none, let's move on to the, what's next here? Discussion, consideration, decision regarding the revision, revision, I'm sorry, of historic marker signs at 14 location in Taos County. Candace, this is Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. I'm very excited about this. It's not 14 locations, it's 14 historic areas listed on these signs. We've been talking about this for years. I think I sent everyone a copy of what the old signs looked like. There is one still standing, Trust Piares in 285. That goes back to the 60s or 70s. And I found out from the CES provider for DOT, Phil Archuleta, who owns P&amp;M signs in Mountain Air, those, and then there's one going to Carson. Those two signs were funded by Main Street, by the town of Taos, back in the 60s or 70s. Currently, like I said, the one on 28564 is still standing. And if you recall the photo, I don't know if Anissa can put them up, they're terribly outdated, it lists Rio Costilla Ski Area and a few other ones. It's kind of embarrassing. The one on, in Carson was stolen. These new signs are called high-intensity prismatic sheeting. They're what DOT uses, so they're not made out of wood like the other older signs. It does kind of track what the old signs did, but this, these are the 14 locations that have been suggested. And this is the time to switch out something if you want something different. Also, the option of white for Taos County or blue for the logo, they did say the white will show up better. The other option is they can do a actual Taos County map with all these listed. If you don't want that, the sign can just be. If you don't want that, the sign can just be as it is. And then in addition to this, the mural for 14-year-old Trompalo that we, Brent, started for the Taos Academy Charter School. That mural, P&amp;M has agreed to install that at the rest area for very reduced rate. I don't know if Anissa can pull that up, but it's not on the agenda. That does not have to be approved. But he is very sympathetic to, trying not to break down, to suicides. And so he, and working with Jerry Valdez, he has agreed to make this all a package. Two signs, the, the sign at the rest area that Taos Charter School did, the mural, install, it's a kind of, they come install, they put them up, and since they're existing, it's just a switch out, there's no permits needed, which was one of the reasons I didn't try and go further to get them in Costilla or Trompis because it would just take a lot longer to get those signs up. So that's what I'm asking, if you have any input, you want to switch out, switch out wording, I really appreciate you giving me that input now.
Any questions, any, anything to add? And it is up for a decision, so.
Can you guys, the Monte Carlo, can you put that? Historic? No. I like it, Commissioner O'Donnell, so I'm okay with what's there on there.
Any preference on the Taos County, white or blue?
Yeah, I wouldn't do red. That's kind of like emergency.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
You want to keep the red background?
It's brown.
It's brown.
It's showing up, yeah.
On my screen.
It does look brown. No, but it's brown.
The white is more visible.
Yeah.
I would agree.
White.
So it looks like white takes it.
And then, do you want to mock up on the side of the Taos County boundary with these 1 through 14 listed or just this sign?
No, everything, and that one you're talking about for the Main Street project was in the 80s.
In the 80s.
But, yeah, in the shape of the county is fine. It's pretty distinct.
Do you want, that's what I'm asking, because they will incorporate the Taos County and then it'll, as best they can, the 1 through 14 locations.
That's, I think, super helpful to have that map information there.
Okay.
I hear you. Okay, any, anything else? Is there a motion to approve as discussed with?
So move.
Second. Okay, motion and a second to approve as, with the obvious agreement of what needs to be added? Are they good? Okay, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Geigos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Vahill?
Yes. Okay, so next is the discussion on potential appointees to the Joint Town/County Recycling Board. Commissioner Odomio?
Thank you. Chair Vahill and, and ask your assistants as well as, as well as the Vice Chair's assistant. Renell just handed you a copy of the resolution that was passed establishing the Taos Recycling Advisory Board. And then the second, the separate packet is the list or the emails or letters from potential appointees. I'm not sure on your, on yours, if it's tabbed. Do you have the little red on the second one?
Yes.
So anything that's in red has already been appointed by the town of Taos. And what the mayor would like to happen is at the next joint meeting, it would not be one this month, but at the next joint meeting, is that the county would have their recommendations for potential recycling board members. So this is the list of everybody that submitted letters of interest or an email of interest to Kathy Romero at the town. And Renell did get this list from Kathy earlier. And like I said, we, when we meet in joint session, they would like five members to come from this commission. And did I cover it all?
You did. And if I could just add, because what I've, if you'll just, I'll just point out that on the resolution, it does indicate that she'll be composed of no more than 11 members. And so at the last town and county meeting, we didn't have a quorum, so we weren't able to share our, you know, give our input in that. But the town did, and hence why we have the red marks. And so Amy Metha, Miles Bonney, Terry Time, and I don't know if I'm missing, I'm missing someone here, Herbert Foster. They were the ones that the town council had noted. But I do understand that it will be ratified at the next town and county meeting, since the resolution is very specific in saying that it must happen at a town and county meeting all at one time. And so hence why I think this is before us, because we definitely need some direction as we go into the next meeting. And Commissioner, Vice Chair, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Just, I would say, well, let's review this updated list. I think there's a question, two members of that board are supposed to be youth members, so I'm not sure if that, if those applicants are reflected in here, but we can, we can double check. I think you and the mayor were going to.
They have not received any youth members.
And I think Cordelia indicated in that meeting that she would go out, she would do some outreach, and that would be something that she wanted to use her, her input on getting those two in. So I think at this time, what's before us really is, is how do we proceed? And we need, and I say that, you know, with all due respect, as we go into the next town and county meeting, we need to be able to, to move forward. So just something for you all to consider, if you're not able to attend. And this is where I don't know if Mr. Arto can help us here, but if you're not able to attend, then is it sufficient that they give a name and then we can present it? Or do they have to, I wonder if they have to be present? I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at the, and I think you have, right, Mr. Arto, on the joint resolution establishing the advisory?
Well, the question would be, are actions going to be taken in regard to people who are not there? I mean, if we're just talking presentations, let me look at it because I am not familiar with it.
Madam Chair, while he's looking, so if I read this resolution, if there are 11 members, two have to be youth, that means the commission as a whole can only appoint four or a fifth if they can find a youth. I'm not, and I understand we have to do it at the next joint meeting, which is not, did I hear you say it's not? In September, they're having it not?
No, it's a joint meeting in September.
Okay. So the other, I mean, I don't have a youth. So that's kind of the issue, if the resolution says two youth, I just, I just, that would mean one of us has to select a youth, the other four from this list. We don't have any youth that have applied. I just, I don't know how we're going to do it.
Right, right. And I think ultimately, I think the idea, correct me if I'm wrong, it says 11. And then we did say we needed some youth in the youth voices. But it would be that 11th one, I believe it was the chair and the mayor would do that 11th person. We're just trying to figure out how to do that. But I hear what you're saying. If two members must be below the age of 19, I think that's why Cordelia was not making a decision that day. She wanted to save her, her decision for a youth member.
So Madam Chair, I've had a chance to look at it. Could you restate your question?
Okay, so the question is, if we don't have everyone present from the commission at a meeting, how do we proceed?
I mean, members of your commission?
This commission, yes.
Well, we can't officially act unless you have a quorum.
Okay, understand that.
So if you have a quorum, you can take these actions.
Okay.
As long as it's been noticed as a meeting of the commission. It's that thing where you can meet with the town of Taos at any point in time if no business is going to be conducted, and you just announce a quorum. But if there's going to be official business of the commission conducted, then there needs to be a quorum present, and these selections would be official act.
Let me redirect, because I think what Commissioner Vahill is asking, let's just take Commissioner Brush as an example. Commissioner Brush doesn't go to the next joint meeting, everybody else goes. And we have a potential appointee, can the rest of the body select one of the members for Commissioner Brush?
Right, can they make my pick for me?
Can they make her pick for me?
Basically.
I think that's up to the commission. I mean, I think if the commission chooses to proceed that way, if somebody can't be present, then I think the commission can, because it's your power as the commission.
So, Madam Chair, Mr. Arto, maybe, maybe it's this, if, if there's one of the five of us who knows for sure they're not going to be at that meeting, but knows for sure that they want, I'm going to take the first one, like Allison, to be the rep, then it's on that commissioner to maybe notify the chair and say, should it work? If there is no such, like, request made saying, hey, I would love my neighbor or this person to be my pick, then it's the commissioners who do show up, provided we have a quorum, who will be making the selections for the advisory. Is that correct?
Correct. You would give, you would give the notice and then like any other time, if the commission does not favor that, your proposal, then they could select somebody else. But it's like any other, you know, commission appointee vote.
Are these, these names here, are these to serve on the board from the town and the county?
Yes.
So what if there's like 30 people that do it? And I guess we're all jointly going to vote on Jimmy and Suzie and Larry and, and there's going to be nine people voting for them people or what?
So the way they would like this to work is with everybody here that's listed, I don't know the number of these, is, so.
Let's say there's nine.
It's your, it's your turn to pick, and then you pick Rebecca Quintana is your pick. And then they'll go to Commissioner O'Donnell, then of the remaining names, it's up to her to pick from the remaining names. And then, so whoever gets, goes first has the choice. And then you could go, this is what happened at the last joint meeting. So as they went around and they picked, except for Counselor Ortega, she, since there was no youth respondent, she didn't exercise her rights. So the rest of the four picked the four people and these are the remaining ones to pick from. They did, so put out another solicitation and they only received one additional letter of interest.
So if I, oh, go ahead. I don't want to interrupt.
Like, for example, I know you know Maggie Rael that's on this thing. So for example, you could pick Maggie is yours, and then Commissioner O'Donnell could pick Ms. Quintana, and then Commissioner Vahill, and so on.
So if I could add that, for example, Amy Metha was one of the names that was mentioned, Herbert Foster, Miles Bonney, and Terry Time. Those are the names that were brought forth by the council. And so I, you know, if one of those names, which I had in mind, obviously that person was picked, so I just go on to the following list, names on the list, yes.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Odomio, if I, if I could just remind us, or for those, those colleagues who were not there when, when we talked about like the role of the Recycling and Advisory Board, the Joint Town/County Recycling Advisory Board, is exactly that advisory. It's not to set policy or to figure out like how we're going to pay for it and where and what. It's really to bring their ideas to the table to brainstorm and make recommendations or ideas. But primarily their role, as I've understood it, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, is going to be possibly to help organize volunteer efforts and certainly to organize educational efforts and to kind of like really help out with that charge. Because to do this successfully, we're going to need a lot of education, so.
You are correct.
It's not to set policy. They're not, they're not determining our recycling program.
So Madam Chair, would it be possible, since we have such a delay in the next meeting, that the notice gets put out again for solicitation? And then I think, I see the issue with this resolution is, are we just assuming someone from the town staff is going to be present at these meetings, someone from the county staff? Because I don't know if these people have experience in chairing and running meetings and doing what they need to do. For instance, I thought that Lorenzo Gutierrez should be at these meetings. Does that mean we have to appoint him? Or this is where the resolution is unclear? Is it just assumed someone from the town and someone from the county is there at these meetings?
It was never discussed with me in, in any joint meeting or for any other separate meetings.